We are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I call this meeting to order, the City Council Redevelopment Agency. Chief office, do you want to come up here and do a pledge for us? No, you can go to podium. So everyone stand please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Manager Maltby, do we have any changes to the order agenda?
No changes this evening.
Mr. Rubens, do we have any report from closed session?
There was an earlier meeting with, uh, earlier special meeting, and I understand there's no reportable items from that meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rubens. Okay, we're gonna get to item number four, the reorganization of the City Council. So we have some new faces in the crowd, so I'll go through with how this is gonna work, since some of you never attended a City Council meeting. Um, we are going to do a reorg of the City Council, so we'll start off with, uh, we're gonna have our new council member, returning council member Brad Lewis do a oath of office. We are going to call for nominations for a mayor after that, which we'll do an oath for as well. We'll follow it up with nominations for vice mayor, and then we'll all make some comments. We'll break for a handful of minutes, so you can all go home. And then for those who want to stay for the rest of the meeting, feel free, and we'll get into public comments and all of the other issues after that. But before we get into the reorg, we have to call for public comments on item number four. I don't have any speaker slips. Seeing none, oh, Ms. Bell? All right, Pat, you have two minutes.
Welcome back, Mr. Lewis. Um, I know that some of you have said that the mayor and vice mayor should be people who are elected by the people.
People. Uh, Mr. Lewis has been elected by the people. He ran in a hotly contested election and came in first. And the ethics code says that any member of council may be chosen as mayor or vice mayor. So I'd like for you to include him in the mix and exclude people who aren't qualified because of their actions in violation of the ethics code. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we will start with, uh, Madam Clerk, you want to take Mr. Lewis downstairs?
Absolutely. If you could raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you're about to enter? Say, "I do."
Say, "I do."
Congratulations.
Welcome back, Mr. Lewis. We'll need to write Academy Award-winning Brad Lewis next to his tag. And we will start now with, uh, item four V, uh, we're gonna call for nominations of mayor.
Mr. Royce.
Mr. Mayor, I, uh, this evening would have the pleasure of nominating Andy Klein for mayor of San Carlos.
Thank you, Mr. Royce, I accept that. Are there any other nominations?
And, uh, for my end, I would like to nominate the person who was just sworn in, Brad Lewis, for mayor.
Mr. Lewis?
Uh, oh, thank you, I'll, uh, accept that as well.
Okay. We will be voting, and Ms. Bourne, um, will be voting on Brad first, correct? Since he had his second nomination?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Griselli?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, we can open it up for discussion if you'd like.
Yeah, I would. We'd like to have a discussion. Um, you know, this is, this is a very difficult, uh, thing. It shouldn't be difficult, but we, we sometimes forget, I think, where we come from on this. Certain events have happened in the last, uh, month or two in, in our city. Unfortunately, the tragic loss of our mayor Omar Ahmad. And, um, in a normal time, uh, the vice mayor would, would automatic, or not automatically, but would certainly be a consider, uh, considered for the, for the position. Uh, there've been some other issues that have come up that may have clouded it, uh, in certain people's minds. Um, I think that, uh, we've always tried, I know when I came on the council, uh, there was a member of the council that had been passed over for the mayorship, and, uh, actually when Mr. Lewis and I both came on, uh, we, uh, tried to bring that to a, uh, should we say, uh, we rectified that situation, which we did. Um, and I believe we've had a, sort of an orderly transition along the way. We have to remember that the mayor is basically in our form of government, a titular position. Uh, he basically has about this much more power than the rest of us, but he has the responsibility to run the meetings, which is a lot more responsibility. But our city manager is the one who runs our city, uh, on a day-to-day basis. We're a board of directors. So, um, it is an important position. It needs to have someone in it who's willing to work hard and do a good job, and, um, it's, it's a, this is gonna be an interesting situation that we're in, where we've gotten ourselves into, so to speak, and I'm, I'm, I just want to make sure that everybody understands what we're gonna, what we're gonna do and how we're gonna vote. So that's why I wanted to make sure we had a little discussion before we, we finalized our vote. I, I myself feel like that, uh, we have a transition period here of six months. Uh, some people feel we should change 180 degrees during this transition period and then catch our normal, possibly our normal process in November. Uh, and other people feel that if it can go for six months, and then in November, we will have a new council member here. Mr. Lewis will not be here. Some other man or woman will be on this council, uh, and maybe two. We don't know that, but there will be an election. So, uh, I just want to make sure everybody understands what we're, what we're about tonight, and that the public understands what we're voting for.
Thank you, Mr. Griselli. Mr. Lewis?
Um, I guess the other thing I'd like to say is, out of respect for Mr. Grokot's nomination, and, uh, for the council, I would never turn down a nomination for mayor, I just wouldn't. Um, I would say that I fully expected that we would have seconds on the nomination, and I didn't necessarily expect a second, uh, for my nomination. Um, I, I will tell you that, um, I believe in the protocol of the position, and I do believe that, um, under the circumstances, the vice mayor typically becomes the mayor. I think council, newly-elected council in November will have a decision to make about, uh, the mayor position at that time, and the fully-elected council, newly-elected council, I should say, should take upon, if there is some concern about length of time or term of the mayor, that's something the council can take up as a body and possibly even modify the way that it's done. But, in my opinion, um, I, it's, it's a position of protocol, it's a position of chairmanship, it's a position of respect, decorum, shown to all the council members, all staff members and all community members. And I would fully expect and feel like anybody on this council could fulfill that. So, again, I accepted that on the basis that I didn't think I would be seconded, um, but I would never turn down that position out of respect for the city.
Uh, Mr. Lewis, um, we, we just don't second nominations in the Roberts rules, so that's why there wasn't one this time. Are there any other comments before we get to voting? Mr. Royce, then we'll go to Mr. Grokot.
Sure, I'd, uh, just like to, uh, share, to, uh, share, actually, a change in my thinking of, uh, what, two or three weeks ago, we, we, we were up here, and there was a nomination made for a prior council member to actually be mayor at, at, at that meeting. And my comment and my thinking at that time was, um, well, that person is actually not an elected official. If, versus, there were four of us that were up here that were elected officials that could have been mayor, but the appointment of someone coming in who doesn't go through the, it's not that you're elected as much as going through the election process and knocking on doors and really getting the flavor of San Carlos. Uh, five minutes ago, I've changed my opinion. I saw Brad Lewis, uh, council member Brad Lewis up there. He's not elected, he's appointed, but as of five minutes ago, we're all equal. And I have total respect, uh, for Mr. Lewis, of course, total respect for Mr. Klein to be mayor, and I just wanted to be, you know, very, very clear that I think, uh, either one of them, uh, could, could be a great mayor. And then just to reiterate, uh, Mr. Griselli's comments, again, uh, we kind of rotate to mayor. Uh, four of us have actually been mayor, uh, already. You basically lead this meeting, which is a very important part of that process, you set the agenda, uh, you go to the ribbon cuttings, uh, you're on TV a little bit more, but we are basically, each of us is one of five to represent the citizens of San Carlos, and, uh, I'm pleased to have two qualified, uh, people's names, uh, before you this evening.
Mr. Grokot?
First, I'd like to say that I am in concordance with the comments that everybody's made thus far, and then just to explain my nomination is, uh, really just the same as what it was when I spoke from this dais, uh, a couple weeks ago about Mr. Davids, that, uh, you know, part of my reasoning, uh, for looking in that direction was not to cause disruption in what is a normal orderly fashion of moving from, uh, uh, vice mayor to mayor, there's a one-year term, et cetera. And I think it's just, uh, um, in this case, it's also a great opportunity, uh, similar to, to what it would have been with Tom, but we, we have been through what the council was asking for, which is a, uh, I forget the term that was used, a, a transparent, uh, process to, to bring someone onto the dais and fill that fifth position. We did that, and we now have someone who has been through, as has been mentioned, the election process, which is very important in my mind, that you win the trust of the people before you serve on this dais. And, uh, Mr. Lewis has certainly done that. So, um, to summarize, my, uh, intent in nominating Brad was that we could have somebody serve as mayor for an interim position and not disrupt the normal process we have, uh, that occurs in, in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grokot. Any more comments?
Just the final one, I, I just wanted, in being clear with council, I completely support Mr. Klein's nomination for mayor, and if that's the, the desire of the, uh, board, I, I completely support that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Uh, Madam Clerk, we will start with, uh, a vote for Mr. Lewis.
Councilmember Griselli.
You want I or no, is that what you want?
Yes.
No.
Councilmember Grokot.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
No.
Councilmember Royce.
Uh, no.
Uh, Vice Mayor Klein.
No.
Madam Clerk, next.
On, okay, on the nomination for, um, Andy Klein as mayor, councilmember Griselli.
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Royce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you're about to enter?
I do.
Congratulations.
Andy.
Before I start crying, uh, so I now call for nominations for, uh, vice mayor.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I would like to nominate, uh, again, as my previous comments and the rotation that we've had, uh, I would like to nominate, uh, Matt Grokot for vice mayor.
Mr. Grokot, do you accept that nomination? Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, are there any discussion? Again, seeing none, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Griselli.
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Royce.
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes.
All right. Well, after the break, we're gonna have to do some sweets, uh, seat switching, so we'll start with comments. Mr. Lewis, do you want to kick us off tonight, since you're fresh up here?
Sure. Um, first of all, I wanted to say to everybody that, um, I'm really doing this out of honor and respect, um, for Omar Ahmad, um, as well as my, uh, respect for the city of San Carlos. Um, Omar was a friend, he's somebody I served up here with, uh, we had a lot of heart-to-heart conversations over the years, and I, I truly, um, uh, am sorry that it's under these circumstances that I'm back. Um, and I wish they were under different circumstances. Um, it, I also want to thank the city council for their support. Um, it means a lot to me that you guys, um, all, um, amongst some super-qualified people said, "Come on back," and I appreciate that. Um, I sort of attribute that to the collegial working atmosphere that I think we forged over the course of four or five years together. And I think that above all else, we all have individual opinions, but it's really important that we listen, respect, and move forward together as a team, as much as possible, and listen to the community together as a team, as well as individual opinions. Um, I also want to thank the, a lot of folks in the community that encouraged me to apply and, and, um, probably got more positive feedback in the last three weeks about the last four years than I got in the entirety of the four years that I was on council. So, uh, I highly suggest it for all other council members. Um, um, once again, my family has completely supported my return to council, so, my wife Regina, and Ella, most of all, was the final vote, uh, to say it was okay, Papa, so I thank you both for your support. And then lastly, was, there's only really one skeptic in the whole process for me, um, and it was, uh, this guy, councilmember Griselli, and he said, "All right," after I was appointed, "I look at this, um, it, it's kind of a multiple-choice question, so either, here's why you came back, either A, it's a marketing employee for Cars Two."
Opening June 24th.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Near you.
Yeah, he's gonna get a credit on the movie now. Um, or, B, I wanted to be invited to the VIP opening of the In-N-Out Burger, um, and then C, it's because I wanted to cut in line and get my picture taken with the World Championship, uh, San Francisco Giants trophy. So, um, all of those are true, Bob, thanks a lot for the, uh, support. Um, and, but seriously, I'm honored to be back, and thanks a lot, and thanks to everybody for the opportunity, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Brad. Mr. Griselli, do you have anything?
Uh, very little, uh, um, proud to, to have, uh, Mr. Lewis up here with us. I think, uh, he, uh, he brings a unique, uh, um, set of, um, of, uh, information and of experience and of, uh, thought process to this, uh, to this body, which, uh, I think will be good for us. Um, I feel that we, uh, do have a lot of challenges in these next six months, um, there's gonna be a lot of items that are coming up. Mr. Lewis will luckily be able to understand the process, and again, with all of us, uh, try to decide what's right for the citizens of San Carlos. Uh, I congratulate, uh, the mayor, the new mayor and the vice mayor. Uh, I, uh, expect and I know they will do the best that they can in their jobs, uh, they've done them before, uh, except for Mr. Klein and being in his top, and I'm sure he will rise to the occasion. Um, I, I really believe that we need to focus on, move, as, as Brad said, moving ahead, and we are gonna have disagreements, we are not gonna agree with every, each other. We didn't in the past, and we won't in the future, but move together as a, as a, as a city and as one bo, as one team and one body to, um, to do the best, as I said, for the citizens of San Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griselli. Mr. Royce?
Yeah, so last week, of course, we interviewed eleven candidates, uh, for the interim. Uh, it, it was, uh, incredible to see, uh, the volunteerism and the skillset and the enthusiasm of people, uh, that wanted to serve on council for six months. And of course, beyond that, I think we got, which is great news, I think we have two or three candidates from that pool that are thinking of running in the election in the fall, 'cause it's always good to have a choice, it's always good to have talented people, it's always good to have change. So, uh, I welcome that, it's very, very good. Uh, of course, Brad did very well in the interview, he got the job. Uh, I do remember one answer to, uh, actually, it was the last question, uh, if he could do one thing in San Carlos, uh, it was Mr. Klein's question, and he did promise, uh, ice cream for all the kids at 3:00 PM. So, uh, we're waiting for that to occur at some point, but, uh...
We'll pick a date.
We'll pick a date.
See it, be our.
As you can see, uh, Mr. Lewis thinks about the kids, he thinks about everybody in San Carlos, so we do welcome him. And as far as our, our past mayor, uh, uh, Mr. Omar Ahmad, uh, he's no longer with us, of course, but no one but him could have created the momentum on this entire council that will carry us through this next year. Uh, he's an incredible guy, and we have momentum. Uh, and hopefully, we have, uh, the teamwork and the spirit to execute, uh, on a lot of things that were his dreams, and we'll continue to dream in San Carlos and make it a great place. And my last comments are for Mr. Klein. Uh, there's no one that knows San Carlos, he grew up here, uh, you maybe realize it, but maybe you don't, how prepared, how knowledgeable he is, how dedicated he is for the city, uh, and his leadership in other groups, economic development advisory and so forth, so, uh, I'm really excited to have, uh, it's always good to have a great leader, uh, and a person sitting right next to you to, to share in the thrill of, uh, working on San Carlos stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Royce. Mr. Grokot?
Well, I just wanted to share with people a little bit about the, the experience, um, the personal experience. You know, uh, you know, when you, when you serve on the council, as long as I have, um, things change in life, things happen, events happen, um, and when you get a call from the city manager early in the morning, and you can, he leaves a message on your voicemail, and you can just tell by the sound of his voice, the tone, something is wrong. But I did not expect to get the news that I did, uh, later on, and was shocked to find out that, uh, Mr. Ahmad, who we had just been in a meeting with the previous night, I think we left here around 10:30 at night, that he had passed, uh, that morning at, at about seven, 7:30, of a heart attack at 46-years-old. You just don't expect that kind of thing. Um, it's not the, you know, I've been on council long enough, it's, he's, he's not the first person that I've served with or worked with in this capacity that I've seen, uh, pass away, and just, you know, it's very quickly, uh, the first time it ever happened to me was I showed up at a roundtable meeting, airport roundtable, and found out that John Long had passed away of a heart attack sailing on his sailboat with his, with his wife over the weekend, and that was shocking as well. So these are not the, the best kind of circumstances to be making, uh, these kinds of changes, but of course, we work through them, and, uh, we do what's necessary to, uh, lead the community in the capacity that we're asked to do, to do so. Um, also wanted to just point out quickly that what we just went through and the, the way we went about the process, I think, uh, you know, sets a precedent for the future. We certainly, when we, uh, went through this process, looked to the past, talked to people, um, and asked, "How was this done before?" And every time you have to go through this unfortunate process, uh, to fill the seat of a council member for whatever that, uh, unfortunate event is, um, it, you know, it sets up for future councils to look back and say, "This is how they did it, maybe we should do it the same way." Um, and I hope that we did it in a wise fashion, that other councils in the future will look back and, and see how we went through this process and, and look at our reasoning and so forth. So, um, that's the conclusions of my comments, and I just wanna, um, I wanna make two thank yous. One, as Randy mentioned, all the folks who, who did apply, uh, for the council seat, including Mr. Lewis and, uh, and, and the others, and then, uh, just, uh, thanks to my council for their confidence in, uh, nominating and voting me vice mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grokot. Um, okay, well...
Mr. Mayor, can I, um, just have a couple seconds?
Yes.
Um, thank you. I had the opportunity to call, uh, Timberlake, Ohio this morning, because I know that your grandfather was the first mayor of that village, and I had the clerk, um, research the records of his first year as mayor of the, it's a village, it's not a city or a town, but it's a village. They were incorporated in December of 1947 by your grandfather. They met at, uh, his name is George Klein, they met at George Klein's house, since there was no village hall. They organized the police department, a marshal, prohibited hunting, and established a fire contract with a nearby village, so I thought that was so ironic, I had to tell him.
Reception at Andy's house tonight, I guess.
And congratulations, by the way.
Thank you, Ms. Bourne, I did not expect that. We attempted to look up my grandfather today, but he predated, uh, internet, so there wasn't much out there on him. Um, I'd like to start first off by talking about, uh, Mr. Lewis, because that is why, uh, we're first, what we started with tonight. Filling a council seat of someone who was as close to all of us as Mr. Ahmad is an incredibly daunting task, and, and I'm so thankful that we were lucky enough to have such a, a talented pool with the eleven people who, who applied, and then to have Mr. Lewis step forward and, and be the, the man that we could all support, was a great moment, I think, for a council that hasn't been unified on everything, like Mr. Griselli pointed out, but we were unified in our supportive view. Um, I'm the only one up here who hasn't served with Mr. Lewis, uh, I took his seat, and thank you for that. Um, but I'm glad that we actually get a chance to work together. I think we're gonna have a great six months, and I, I look forward to your leadership, and I, I'm really happy that you're up here with us. I think it's a great moment for our city and a great moment for us as a council to have you back, and it's an awesome movie on top of it, so, uh, I'm, I'm very glad. Um, now to go on to, to being mayor, first, I, I want to thank the council for, um, appointing me mayor. This has been a dream of mine for, I, as long as I can remember. I, uh, I grew up in this town, as Mr. Royce said, and I always wanted to, to be mayor of San Carlos, and, um, I went to school, uh, with Don Eaton's children, actually, and I remember being in middle school, thinking how cool it was to have a dad who was mayor of San Carlos. I was like, "One day, I want to do that." Um, and I've gotten that chance, and, uh, I, I thank you guys, it's, I, I have very conflicted feelings all day today. As you can see, I didn't take many notes, and that's really rare for me. Uh, normally, I would have pages and pages, uh, of stuff written, but I, it was a hard thing for me to wrap my head around to get your childhood dream, but the reason I got it today was because I lost one of my best friends. Um, so that's been an incredible struggle for me for the past day or so, I'm really thinking about what this means, and, you know, Omar was a good friend of mine, and he was, he's like a big brother up here. He kind of took me under his wing and let me know, you know, "Don't, don't get too crazy up there," you know, kind of held me back sometimes, and then let me go a lot of other times. Um, and he was a good friend, and he was a good mentor, and he's severely missed by, by a lot of us, um, and, you know, I don't look at this as my term, I look at this as the next six months of filling out his term. Uh, I would have loved nothing more than to take the gavel from him in, in December, which, oh, it's right there, um, but I didn't get that opportunity, so, you know, to his family and those friends and those of his supporters in this, this community, I'll spend the next six months ensuring that his legacy remains and that this is the last six months of his mayorship, and maybe one day I'll get my own, but this, this six belongs to Omar. Um, I want to thank all, all the people who spoke up for me, all of our supporters, all my friends, um, my family especially, my dad who's here, my aunts who are here, and my brother Dave, and my wife Carly, um, your support has meant everything to me. I know this has been a, oh, you know, a hard time for all of us to have me up here and going through everything, especially over the last month, and your unwavering support of me has, has meant more than you can imagine. But, so, thank you. Um, thank you to the community, San Carlos means the world to me, as most of you know. It's, it's my town, it's my home, and, you know, I, I grew up here, and I hope one day to raise kids here and then have this be the last place I ever live. I don't feel the need to ever leave. Um, it's a beautiful community, we're full of intelligent, caring people, and I don't think you find towns like this that often. Uh, I think San Carlos is special, and I know a lot of people say about that, about where they're from, but it's true here. It's, we're not being egocentric or anything, San Carlos is a special community, and it, it raises a special breed of people, and I think we all come together to support our community and to support each other, and I've seen that over the last month, just the outpouring of support from this wonderful town, um, and I'm thankful for that. And one is what we've done. This, uh, this past year and a half has been very challenging for the council up here. Um, we've taken on the task of restructuring a town that was facing bankruptcy, and it's never an easy decision to make, you're going to upset a lot of people, regardless of what you do. If you do nothing, people are gonna be a little upset, upset when the town closes up, um, and if you do what you need to do to fix it, it's going to upset a lot of people as well, and, and we've done that, we've succeeded at that, that's one of the things we've been very successful about. But now that we have fixed the problems, um, most of them, now it is time, as, as all my council members have said, to come back together, to come back together as a community and move forward together and, and say, "This is the new town, this is what we stand for, this is what we believe in, and we're going to work together." Uh, a year and a half ago, I sat up here, and we faced a three-and-a-half-million-dollar deficit. My first night, instead of having the big party at the end where everyone gets the wine and has a good time and goes home, we came back in and we had to vote on layoffs, and that was a hard, uh, quick reminder to what this job actually entails. I had about five minutes before we had to talk about firing people from their jobs, and that's an awful thing to have to do on your first night, and we've managed to do a lot to not have to do that again. Uh, we're looking at a, a surplus for the first time in ten years here in San Carlos. A surplus not because we just balanced the budget, but because we fixed the budget. We balance the budget every year by laying people off, cutting jobs, or cutting back and stealing from reserves. This was the first time in a decade where we said, "No, we're just gonna fix the problem." And we did that, and we did that with the help of everyone up here, and, and our late mayor Ahmad especially. Uh, we have a lot of people to thank for that. We've been able to reform pensions and have givebacks from our employees because they supported us. They wanted to keep their jobs, and they realized that we're a team, and they gave back, and we did everything we could to help them out. Um, and I'm thankful to all of our employees, we have a talented staff, from our city manager, city attorney, our assistant city manager sitting over there, to our department heads, our assistant city manager sitting over there, to our department heads, to all our frontline staff, to our police officers in the sheriff's department, and our firefighters in the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. We have an incredibly talented staff. We don't pay as much as some of the other towns, but I have a feeling that some of our staff here stay here because they love this town just as much as the people who live here. And we're lucky to have a lot of them who live in this town as well. And we are a team, and we can get back to that now that the business is done. We were able to contract out our police department. We have a wonderful sheriff's department who's been really pitching in, and the one complaint we have now is there's too many cops. And I'm sorry, but we're not going to change that. We've been able to increase services by cutting costs, and that's something that's not done much here in the Bay Area and the Peninsula especially. And we were the first town to do it, and we are going to come out of the storm, and we're going to be the first ones out of the storm, and we're going to be able to focus on things that I'm sure everyone would rather talk about than what we've had to talk about. Tonight, we're going to talk about building a playground and not having to raise funds for it, but be able to do what a city's supposed to do and take care of its infrastructure. And it's been a long time since we've been able to have that talk. So it's going to be a little awkward at first, but I'm sure we're going to get used to really taking care of the community here shortly. I don't want to go on and on because I'm going to be up here for at least six months, so you're going to hear a lot from me, but I just want to say thank you. This has been an incredible experience for me. It's been a lifelong dream. I hope the next two and a half years are just as exciting as the year and a half, or maybe a little less exciting would be nice, but still exciting. But I look forward to the work that we have still to do. I look forward to serving this community, and I'm thankful to all of you. This has been a great experience. This has been one of the best times of my life, and I just want to say thank you. So thank you to the council. So with that, we're going to take about a five-minute break here unless anyone else has anything to chime in. I think we're fine. So we'll take a five-minute break, and then for those of you who came for this part, you can have a good night. And for the rest of you, we'll be back in the meeting in about five minutes. Thank you.
Drive through the city of San Carlos and see a flag flying out in front of every home for that celebration of our flag. Number two, I wanted to let folks know that we recently, all of the council members, got this book in our council mail, and this is written by a local person, Ruth Silens, who's, I think, about 90 years old or something? Yeah, very old. She wrote this book about appreciating art and why art is important. So I read through this over the weekend, and I'm going to make my copy available, if they don't have them already, at the public library, so that others from the public can get a hold of that book. Third item is, just to make a notation and get some kind of comment, I suppose, back from the council. We all received a letter as council members from the city of Menlo Park, asking for support with them, and I'll just read what it says here. "The Menlo Park City Council is requesting the assistance of all public officials included in the SBWMA to limit future rate increases. Please join us in demand that Allied and the auditor scrupulously review all of Allied's expenses, limiting as much as possible questionable expenses, particularly as Allied shut down its operation in 2010." So I don't know how we could perhaps get our staff to help us as council members and support Menlo Park in this endeavor.
So Mr. Grokot, will you refer that to staff and maybe bring it back, or we'll figure out a way to get that going for you?
Very good. I said that was my last item, and I actually misspoke. I did have one more item that I'd like council to consider for a future agenda, and that is that with the events that we did just go through with Mayor Ahmad, I was speaking to the city manager about this kind of at a casual time that we had together, and it was actually a little bit uncomfortable for him to know what to do and how much he was allowed to expend from city funds for such a thing. And so I think it would be a lot more comfortable if we took this up and looked at it as a policy for, you know, what does staff expect to do if we have a council member or a mayor or vice mayor pass during their term in office, so that the staff feels very comfortable in what they're doing and the actions they're taking. So if we could take that up as a future agenda item.
That sounds great. So we'll work on that, and we'll get that in an agenda either before or after the potential break. Is there anything else, Mr. Grokot?
That's it.
Okay. I only have two things. One is another reminder that the World Series trophy is coming next Monday. It's not that much longer anymore. So it'll be here at Burton Park from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. They have to take it right at 5:00, so I'd get there early and line up. Our Parks and Rec Department and the Sheriff's Department have been working together on putting together some safety issues and making sure that everyone lines up correctly, but you will be allowed to take a picture with it. So come on out, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., next Monday, World Series trophy. And then the last thing I have to do, it's a little bit of a personal thing, and since she brought up my grandpa, now she's going to get it. Ms. Bowlin has been the acting Rotary President for the past year, and this is her last month in office. So I'd like the council to join me in congratulating her, job well done, and thanking her for the service to our community.
No story about her grandmother doing this?
No, no, no story. There's stories about Christine being president of Rotary, but not appropriate for public. So we will move on then to Item 6A. It'll be the first one of these I get to do. We have a proclamation declaring June 30, 2011, a social media day in San Carlos, and I see our president and the CEO of the chamber here, Dave Bishar, and Ron Collins, if they want to come up and accept this proclamation. Oh, and no, of course. So I will try to keep this to 140 characters or less. For those Twitter fans, that was a joke. No problem. So it's June 30, 2011, a social media day. I'll just read a couple of the words. "While social media technologies such as Twitter and Facebook have made it easier for people to communicate locally, regionally, and globally, and while social media is a widely utilized form of communications technology, and communications technology is a critical and expanding component of the local economy in San Carlos and throughout other parts of Silicon Valley. San Carlos will celebrate Social Media Day 2011 with a masterful meetup in downtown San Carlos on Thursday, June 30, from 4:00 to 7:30, to engage the community in the use of social media. Therefore, be it resolved that I do hereby proclaim the day of June 30, 2011, as Social Media Day in the city of San Carlos, dated this 13th day of June 2011." And Melanie, do you have anything you'd like to say, since you are a social media guru in San Carlos?
Well, I'm very excited about this. I'm, I don't know for sure, but I think we're one of the very first U.S. cities to proclaim a social media day. I know a couple of cities in Canada have proclaimed it, but I don't know about the U.S., so it's really very exciting. Thank you so much.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you, Wes. This is the time where we say we like that. Like.
Okay. We will now move to item number seven, which is public comment. Persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on the opposed agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes, and we will get started. We have, I don't see her here, but maybe, oh, there she is. We have Pat Potter, followed by Pat Bell, followed by Andre Carpu, and Sam Hertzberg. So Ms. Potter. Oh, you brought pops.
I did. Congratulations, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
I'd like to have a green date. I'm Pat Potter with San Carlos Green. But barring that, I know that the agenda that was for tonight got pushed out, and two of those items were on banning takeout Styrofoam food containers, and the other was consideration of a plastic, single-use plastic bag ban. So while you're thinking between now and when it does come up on the agenda, I've given you some reasons why to ban Styrofoam. And San Mateo County gave us this great sign that says, "What does your bag say about you?" Anybody would like one. And what I've done, and others in San Carlos Green have done, is put it on the backseat of our car under the windows, so when people are going to the grocery store and they're going, "Darn it, I forgot my bag," they'll see this sign. So you all get one.
Thank you, Ms. Potter. Thank you. We will now go to Pat Bell. Pat, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Pat Potter. I support both of those, and I hope you get them on the agenda as fast as possible. I've started telling restaurants, "Oh, you have Styrofoam? No, don't give me Styrofoam. Can you wrap it in a piece of foil or something?" It really gets attention when you refuse their Styrofoam container. And I'm happy to have Social Media Day. My nephew is a big fan of Facebook. I think that's terrific. But I think we should do that more. Other cities proclaim days for all kinds of things. There are national days for everything, and I think we should recognize people like organic gardeners and whatever else. I mean, you could do it at every meeting, and some cities do. Maybe you don't want to go that far, but we never recognize anybody. So I'd like to see us do more of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Next, we have, forgive me for the pronunciation, Andre Carpu. Sir, you have two minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio. The first thing I'm going to say is that it's very undemocratic to have two minutes for people to come here and speak, and last time you interrupted me two times. You're rude, mister. So I'm come from everywhere here. It's a long way on the bus and train, and then I come here and being shut up. You see, I have lots of grievance in with you, 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 and you. You're responsible for stealing my car, for stealing my solar card. You may be tired of hearing of it, but I'm tired of waiting for it. You see, since you're responsible, why don't you go get it? It's a shame. It's a shame. Do that to an older man. It's abuse, elder abuse. Shame on you. Shame on you. And I wrote you a letter. Have you, any of you answer me? No. Have you? What's happened to you? Do you have a problem? Can you communicate? Can you tell me something about the letter that I wrote you?
Sir, we forward that on to our staff in the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, then. I want to go on again, and I want to get something less than, more than two minutes. And also, another thing I want to mention about this council, you should have a third minute.
We're going to need you to wrap up, sir.
Because you get career politician here, and that's rotten. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Sam Hertzberg. Hi, Sam.
Congratulations, Andy, and welcome back, Brad. I just, I'm a planner for the county, and I learned about a new tool last week that was unveiled by the state of California and USGS. It's called caladapt.org. It's a new website that is dealing with climate change.
Sorry, Sam, was that was caladapt.org?
Cal, I think it's cal-adapt.org, and it's a new website meant for local jurisdictions to deal with potential impacts from climate change. And when I was flipping through it, I noticed there were some potential impacts related to sea level rise on the east side of San Carlos. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I saw on your list of capital projects...
Excuse me, sir. Okay. Keep going, Sam.
Okay. On your list of capital projects, you had a drainage plan proposed, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention as you're moving forward with that. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And that is all the public speakers I have, slips I have, but there's any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Item 8, Approval of Consent Calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be ruled for separate action. Is there anyone who wants to remove any items? Mr. Grokot?
Actually, quite a few. I apologize for this. F, G, H, I, and O.
Okay. Any other council members? Now, seeing none, can I get a motion on those remaining?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent calendars, Item 8A, B, C, D, E, J, K, L, M, and N.
A second to that. Seconded by Mr. Royce. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Bowlin?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Now, Mr. Grokot, on your items, is there a lot of discussion, or do you have little, short questions?
Two, there's virtually none. One is just because of how I wish to vote on it, and F and G, I have questions.
Okay, so there's not that much. So we'll go through them now instead of waiting until the end of the meeting. So we'll start with Item 8F. Mr. Grokot?
So on Item 8F, this, for the sake of the public, is authorizing a professional service agreement for planning, economic development, redevelopment, and housing consulting services with Neil Martin Associates for fiscal year 11 and 12, and 12 and 13.
Okay. Do you have questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I see we have Ms. Mendenhall standing up.
Okay.
Oh, whoever from the staff would like to come up and answer Mr. Grokot's questions.
Don't all rush up at once.
Deborah Nelson, Planning Manager.
Okay, Mr. Grokot?
So my first question is, what's the current contract for this? This is, what this is asking for is not to exceed an amount of $300,000 per year for the two fiscal years, 11, 12, and 12, 13.
That's equivalent to your current contract with Neil Martin. We have an annual expense of about $147,000, which is from the individuals sitting in our office on a weekly basis and providing day-to-day kind of service. When there are specific projects, either an increase in the workload, or specific RDA redevelopment projects, or economic development projects, or a big plan where we need a higher level of senior expertise of planner, then the contract can bump up to $300,000. Generally, that money comes from either redevelopment funds, or we try to do deposit accounts for the bigger projects. So it is an extension of what's, has been in place for the last two years.
Okay, very well, and thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Grokot?
No questions.
We can do discussion then, if you like.
Yeah.
Mr. Grokot?
So part of the thing I'm struggling with on this is that, and I appreciate Ms. Nelson's answers, but to me, two of the primary reasons to contract out is, number one, and she alluded to it a little bit, is to, when you're in a situation where you have work that goes up and down, and you're trying to equalize it with a full-time equivalent or a full-time employee. And so I certainly understand that and appreciate that, but I think the other reason that we contract out is to keep the cost true to the market. And even though, when I read through here and I read through the analysis, and it talks about, you know, ongoing projects we have that are important to us, and the knowledge base that these people who work for Neil Martin have, and the long relationship we've had with Neil Martin over the years, I still think it's important to go out every so often and test the market and see where we are. And to do so, I don't know if it costs too much to do that, or if it costs a lot to do that, but to me, it's important for two reasons. One, to test the market, and the other is to, and I've said this before from the dais, personally, I don't like being too close with our contractors, where they get comfortable. I like a situation where they're made to compete for the job that they do for us, and that they are kept to the knowledge that they are in a position of having their jobs competed for, their contracts competed for. So I would have appreciated going out for an RFP, even if we hadn't have changed, just so we can see where the market is. Two years ago, things were far different than they are now, and, like I said, it would also send a message to NMA that, you know, yes, we appreciate your service, but we're not so close that, you know, friends are friends, business is business.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
The only thing I remember we discussed in council years ago, I think we talked about it now every three years roughly, so it's one of the reasons why I was comfortable with this. I felt like if we do it too many times, it can be, A, expensive, a little bit time-consuming and so forth. I think it's a good point, and I agree with some of the foundation of that point. I felt like after two years, we're in good shape, and so I was comfortable with it.
Is there any other discussion? All right. Seeing that, Mr. Grokot, would you be okay with a compromise that if we approved this tonight, it would be required the next time it comes back to go out to the market?
Yes.
Is that okay?
I suppose that might be the intent. This is a two-year extension.
Yeah, yeah. So is staff, will you jot that down? Okay. Then, Mr. Grokot, can you make that motion with the, that added on?
Sure. We've moved then approval of, I guess we're just moving to approve the professional service agreement for planning, economic development, and housing consulting services with Neil Martin and Associates for two years, 2011 and 12, and 2012, 13 fiscal years.
Okay. With the understanding that it will come back then to go out to market. Okay. Madam Clerk?
So it's two resolutions, city and RDA?
Okay. We have to read the resolutions. Mr. Grokot?
All right. The first one is Resolution Number 2011...
38.
38, and that's Resolution of the City Council of the city of San Carlos, approving an agreement for consulting services with Neil Martin and Associates.
Do you need separate votes? Can we do the round one vote? Madam Clerk?
It's up to you, Mr. Mayor. I'll have a second.
We need a second.
A second.
And then, since we're voting at the same time, the second resolution, and we will be voting as an RDA board, not as a council, but I guess we can put the two together. Resolution Number RDA 2011...
187.
187. And the language is the same, except it's a resolution of the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency.
Is there a second for that?
I second.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Okay. Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay. Item 8G is adopting a resolution approving a one-year contract for economic development, redevelopment, and housing consulting services with Rosenex Bevisac Group, and authorizing the executive director to execute a professional service agreement through the end of the fiscal year 2011, 2012. Do we have a staff member for that? Mr. Sewicki, and then Mr. Grokot, you can start us off with questions.
Sure. And the question I had is, I was confused by the chart on the second page, and, sorry, I wasn't able to call you on this, you know, just cleared it up during the day, but anyways, the chart talks about fiscal years as though they are single-digit years, 2007, 2008, et cetera, and then for 2011 is the last one, and it appears as though it's current. So that caused me a lot of confusion, because, number one, it seems as though we are late in addressing this, because if we're in the midst of the year, and then we're approving a contract for that year, and, so I was just confused about that. And then, if I may, the second question is, it seems comparatively to these other years, since I don't know what fiscal year 2011 means, it looks as though we may have, you know, $52,000 for, if fiscal year hasn't even started, if I'm thinking of July 1. So I guess I'm just completely confused by this.
I apologize for the confusion. Fiscal 2011 is 2010, 2011, the current fiscal year, and those are year-to-date numbers. We're asking for approval for a contract for the next fiscal year, starting July 1, 2011, through June 30, 2012.
So the 52...
Is this fiscal year-to-date?
So let me follow you on this, then. We were, we were at, basically, '07, we were at $80,000. '08, $93,000. '09, we were $149,000. Then we dropped to $140,000, and then this past fiscal year, basically, we were $52,000. And now we're jumping back up to $140,000. I understand we're just approving and not to exceed, so, yeah.
And these were the amounts that we actually expended to date in each of those fiscal years.
Okay. So for this fiscal year that we just finished...
Or about to finish.
About to finish, excuse me, is 52,000.
Right, to date. There's probably another bill or two that will be processed.
Excuse me?
There's probably another bill or two that will be processed.
Uh-huh. And after we do that, where will we be?
I would estimate about $70,000 or $80,000.
$70,000, okay. I guess I would only say, number one, it would be helpful to stay with, you know, the procedure that we usually use, where we call a fiscal year a, you know, 10, 11, or whatever. And the other thing that I would like in the future in these reports, I don't know if other council members would appreciate this or not, but it's just a little bit more about the explanation, like in this case, we're going from 70,000 back up to 150,000, in the anticipation of, something that would explain that and talk about the workload and why we're jumping around as we are, so.
So they've had a contract for $150,000. We pay them only for work that they...
I understand that. I understand that, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Can you get a motion?
So I've moved approval of, what is this?
An RDA resolution?
We have to do this one. This is also two, RDA and the city council. Okay. So, oh, it's just the RDA.
Just the RDA, yeah.
So Resolution of the RDA...
188.
188. A Resolution of the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency, approving execution of an agreement for services with Rosenau Spevisac Group.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Royce. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Board?
Director Grisilli?
Yes.
Director Grokot?
Yes.
Director Lewis?
Yes.
Director Roy?
Yes.
Chair Klein?
Yes.
Okay. H... I'll take H and I together, if I might.
Are you going to need a staff member?
No.
Okay.
No. Just a comment on this. I did, I called the city treasurer today to find out if he had had an opportunity to review these and look at them, and he had not, but he did take the time to look at them today and then get back to me, and he was okay with these. My only comment on this, Mr. Mayor, would be that in the future, when we have items like this, this pertains to what he does as an elected... like this, this pertains to what he does as an elected city treasurer, and I think the staff would be well advised to give him an opportunity to look at these things as well, and put in any comments that he may wish to add to the staff report.
Okay, see, staff, no, you're okay with that, so can we have a motion for the two?
I'm sorry, could we have a little further discussion?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. I just, I noted to staff already, there's a typo in the attachment C, which is the, under reserves and fund balance policies, with a new italicized financial policy, which says deleted instead of depleted, which is noted by Rebecca, and I don't mean to point that in public, other than the fact that if you're reading through it, city manager can't actually delete all unassigned funding categories, which is probably an important distinguishing characteristic. Not that we wouldn't trust you, Jeff, it's just a matter of, I'm not sure it's good policy. And then the other thing, and this is, I leave this for council to discuss, with me being freshly back, this was a lot to digest, actually, because it's brand-new categories for things that we talk a lot about, and it's always difficult, I think, for the public, as well as for us, to say, okay, well, so what's the difference between assigned, unassigned, committed funds, and so forth? And this is new definitions and language for it, I think we all sort of have to wrap our heads around, at least to my knowledge, you haven't had a lot of discussions at council about this yet. So, and also, some of it's counterintuitive, like the new financial policy is actually, the order of depletion is, first is unassigned funds, and that's the first order of depletion. The second is assigned funds, and the last order of depletion is committed funds. And just when I glance at that, I kind of go, that feels, it feels upside down. And I only bring it up that, for me, I think, you know, I understand it well, it'll take clarification probably from staff as we move forward, and Ms. Mendenhall, as we move forward on these things, just to understand the sort of counterintuitive distinctions within the policy, and also for the public, so they just get what these differences are, which I think are, they're just, the new language we all have to sort of wrap our heads around. So, probably need clarification as we go forward, and it's, it might also be with the presentation, if we have lighter agenda in the future, I'll leave that to Mr. Mayor to decide for that.
And based on the length of this agenda, is why we kind of put it onto the consent calendar. It's also, some of, a lot of this is required, because not really, we don't have much leeway on it, so that's why, and so, further, staff will recognize that, if we have lighter agendas, we'll make sure to pull these items, but I put them on based on the length of the agenda, or we agreed to, so.
Through the chair?
Yep.
I would echo what Mr. Lewis had stated, and further say that, you know, even if it's something that's just required, it's a new policy direction, and so it would be good to have a, I think, a more public report on it and so forth in the future. I understand from talking to the city treasurer that at least one of these items needed action tonight, that's what, you know, so we have to kind of move forward on it, but it would be nice, when we have something that's a new policy direction, whether or not we have much leeway, just to present it, let us discuss it a little bit, have the public see it. And actually, on one of these, the, this one about public agency retirement services, and establishing a revocable trust, we could pat ourselves on the back a little bit for that one.
Okay. Noted up, so can we have a motion then, Mr. Grokot?
So, I would move approval of agenda items 8H and 8I.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, and the last one we have is 8O, Mr. Grokot. Right. Do you need a staff member for this one?
No, I do not. On this one, I'm just set to vote no on it. I appreciated the work that these folks did, but I, quite frankly, I didn't get, in my decision-making process, there wasn't a lot that was put in the report that led me to the decision I made, and the resolutions that I, that we came to, and quite frankly, I don't, maybe I'm missing something, but I don't see a lot of value in continuing the contract.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, can I have a motion? Oh, no, we'll jump all at once. Mr. Royce?
Let's see. I'd make a motion for an agreement with tri-data for consulting services, to fire emergency services, and the amount up to forty thousand dollars.
Is there a second? Second. Second amendment, Mr. Lewis, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm also going to be voting no on this item.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Grisilli?
No.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
All right, moving on, there are no reports to council, correct staff? All right, and we'll move to 10A then, a study session, which is to review recommended capital project options for the fiscal year 2011-2012. Ms. Mendenhall, do you know how much time you're going to need?
It's, there's two of us tonight, Community Development Director Al Savae will be presenting as well, so probably twenty minutes.
Okay, we will get started then. So for the public, we will take the staff report, we will have questions from council, we'll have public comment, and then we'll have discussion.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Rebecca Mendenhall, interim administrative services director. Tonight, the community development director and I will be presenting the capital budget for your consideration. This chart depicts the proposed capital project spending for the next fiscal year that's outlined in your staff report. At a later point in this presentation, the community development director will be going through some specific projects in more detail. The majority of the proposed capital budget spending will be from RDA funds using proceeds from the bonds and other grant funding. Another significant area relates to the general fund capital projects, where this year, we've been able to propose several new projects. In prior years, the city council has transferred all of a portion of the Shoreway Transfer Station franchise revenues, which is estimated at 1.3 million, to the general fund to offset the general fund deficit. Given now that council has balanced the general fund, the franchise fee revenue can once again be used to fund capital infrastructure. In addition to the transfer fees, the council has directed staff to budget ERAF, the Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund rebate, into the capital fund. These funds are not guaranteed, however, in January this year, we did receive close to nine hundred thousand. In 2012, ERAF is budgeted to be about seven hundred thousand, since the dollar amount we've been receiving has been trending down, and once again, this revenue is not guaranteed. So the next slide will show how the spending amounts have changed over the last few years. So you can see in 2009 and 2010, revenues from the transfer station were not available, so capital project was fairly low. Other funds also had low capital spending. In 2011, you'll see a rise in funds, or in spending, this is related to RDA projects using the bond proceeds, as well as the Highlands Field Synthetic Turf Project from Park and Low Funds. In 2012, we're proposing additional RDA projects, and several general fund projects, which will be discussed in more detail later on. This slide reflects the ending fund balances for each fund. One thing I do want to note is, the wastewater fund, although it appears to be growing, this model has not broken out the amounts that would be restricted for investments in capital assets, so one of the restricted accounts. These amounts vary, but it's anticipated that by the end year 2016, the unrestricted balance available for capital will only be between two and three million. This fund balance chart will be updated accordingly before we bring the operating and capital budgets to you on, at the next council meeting. So here's the rest of projects that we were able to complete, or we estimate will be completed in the next couple of weeks. Couple of items on here, Highlands Park Turf that I already mentioned, and the CMMS software system, which is for our Public Works Department. So then, I'm just going to quickly go through the wastewater and all the other funds, and then Al Savae will come up and address specific projects. The wastewater fund, this is the city's only enterprise fund, and it's used to account for operations that are financed and operated like private businesses. The wastewater fund is the ability to set weights and fees necessary to fund sewage treatment, transmission, major capital improvements, and improvements to the sewer system. The items in bold, you can't really tell on here, but those will be the ones that will be discussed further in detail. The gas tax fund is used to account for revenue received and expended under the State of California Street and Highways Code Sections 2106, 2107, and 2107.5. Revenues received must be expended for the maintenance and construction related to streets. The city's street resurfacing project is funded from both the gas tax and general funds this year, for a total annual investment of 1.2 million toward pavement management. Increased funding should provide for a 2% increase in pavement condition. This will be discussed in more detail during the State of the Streets report, which I believe is scheduled for the August 22 meeting. So, as noted earlier, the majority of the funding available for capital projects comes from the franchise fees and the ERAF rebates. These allow for general capital improvements, including building construction, technology, and other infrastructure improvements. These are, this is a list of projects that's previously been approved by council. There's a couple more that have been previously approved, and then flipping into the new and future projects, these include funding for a capital and operating budget software system, which is actually one of our strategic plan items as well. The budget software is intended to manage the capital project funding and project delivery. As part of this project, staff will be reviewing the current capital budget process with the council ad hoc subcommittee that was appointed in May, I believe, and will be recommending changes to improve and enhance the existing process. In addition to capital budget software, we're looking at software that will give us the flexibility in the operating budget to possibly go back to two-year budget cycle. Also included in the new and future projects is the website enhancement. This is another strategic plan item, and as part of the branding project, we're looking to refresh the city's website. We're working with Look Design Now to integrate the branding into a new look and feel, or the skin of the website, as well as upgrade and update the navigation architecture to include better access from mobile devices. As I said before, we have money now, so we have quite a few new projects. Here's some additionals. This one also includes a panic button installation, which will be done in several stages. We're currently in negotiations with the San Mateo County Communications Center through the sheriff's office, and this will be discussed with them. Given the issues in other cities, general security has been a concern. The city's safety committee and risk management committees have been discussing this idea for some time. We used to have panic buttons in city hall, and when we replaced our phone system, we lost the ability to have those. So we're looking to bring those back. Again, more new projects. This one includes the council chambers remodel, which will include upgrades to audio and technology equipment, as well as moving the dais and installing screens for the council in front of you to see what's being projected behind you, so you don't have to turn your heads. The technology portion would be funded by PEG funds, which are restricted for technology spending only. So moving on to the park and low account, these revenues are for development fees collected and used, these are used to finance the acquisition of construction of new parks and major improvement of city parks. And one of the items on here is the Burton Park Phase II development, which Al will be discussing later on. Parking and low, this fund accounts for parking fees collected and used to finance parking improvements in San Carlos. Recently, we've started a parking employee permit process, and that money is going into this fund, so we're looking to do a downtown parking management plan. The RDA capital fund is used to account for activities related to the projects in the redevelopment area. The major sources of funding include bond proceeds, property tax increment, federal grants, and traffic mitigation fees. Al will be discussing a lot of these later on. And here's some additional projects in the RDA area. The library improvement fund, this is, this is used to account for rents and other tenant activities over at the library. The revenues are used to offset building improvements and large maintenance projects in the building. One of the projects that's on the list is the interior remodel project, that's a joint project through the JPA. And as noted on the attached list here, there are several projects that have been requested, but have not been recommended for funding at this time. One of the projects on there includes the city hall accessibility improvements. This is pending the completion of the ADA self-evaluation and transition plan, which is scheduled to be done this year. This amount is only an estimate, and the likely change is it's anticipated that the project will include changes to the elevator and restrooms on the second floor. As per our policy, if funds become available, the city manager will make recommendations to move items from the unfunded to the funded list. And with that, I will turn it over to Al Savae, who will discuss some of the projects in more detail.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. What we decided to do is highlight some of the key projects, both big and small, in the capital improvement program. We are required to improve the sanitary sewer collection system as part of the Baykeeper decree, and we've come up with a plan to improve and maintain 108 miles of sewer pipe in the city of San Carlos, and the plan includes on-the-ground equipment for system-wide cleaning and inspection. Last year, CIP included this hydroflush truck, which is just getting into operation, it sends a pipe or tool down into the sewer system, and it blows water back at a very high velocity, and it pulls the debris back into the area where the manhole is there, and then it's sucked out by the vacuum truck. And again, this is a key piece of equipment in order to keep up with maintenance. But this year's CIP includes inspection equipment, such as the CCTV camera and van there, and it sends a camera down into the sewer system, so that you can actually see inside it, and look for damage, and decay, and roots, and things like that, and we take that information and make an inventory of that in our GIS system, geographic information system. So these improvements will keep us in conformance with the requirements of the Baykeeper decree, and keep our sewer system in good working order for the years to come. A significant landslide issue has developed in the Shelford Avenue easement between Shelford Avenue and San Carlos, and Cortlandt Road and Berlingame, and while the cost associated with this project isn't a large cost, it is an important project to protect our sewer main, and also to protect the homes above and below this slide. The study would provide engineering recommendations for a permanent fix to this problem. The crosswalk at El Camino Real in Belmont Avenue has been a dangerous one, involving a number of auto-related accidents, some including pedestrians, and that's located here. This is San Trans Bus Shelter, we have Walgreens and Trader Joe's located just here. So needless to say, it's a very busy intersection, and this project would use several capital sources to make physical improvements, to make it a very, a much safer place for pedestrians and bicyclists, and also vehicular circulation there. This slide shows the Cranefield Avenue and San Carlos Avenue intersection, and all the potential vehicular movements at that intersection. There is a fairly high volume of traffic there because of its proximity to Carmon High School, as you can see, and also, there's a number of different roads that converge there. This project was, to study this intersection, was initiated due to citizen complaints in the area, and regarded safety concerns because of all the different traffic movements, and the volume of the traffic, and also the different kinds of traffic, you have bikes, and different cars and vehicles coalescing here. So, the Transportation and Circulation Commission took a look at this back in 2010, and they recommended that this intersection be studied further. So this capital project would be to study the potential alternatives to improve traffic at this intersection. The L'Oreala Park project would include a new toddler playground, playground equipment, upgrades to the restrooms, and a water feature. And Miracle Play System is actually here this evening to give you a presentation on this, so I'm not going to go into too much detail for you, but this project represents a significant enhancement to the amenities at this important eastside community park. Federal law requires that any public agency with over 50 employees to create what they call an Americans with Disabilities Act transition plan, and take the steps necessary to comply with all the federal ADA regulations. This plan would identify our needs for... This plan would identify our needs for physical changes to ensure access to all our buildings, all our parks, parking areas, and our streets to make these places accessible for everyone. And the project would use several funding sources to identify the barriers to accessibility and to make recommended changes and costing for these facilities. Just like our houses, our buildings need regular maintenance and repair, and we have a leaky roof at the adult community center. There are too many problems for this roof to just be repaired and the tiles on the roof to be replaced, so the whole roof needs replacement. And this would keep this important community asset from further damage long-term and would permit the installation of solar panels in the future. Right now, if there's a natural disaster and power goes out at the city's corporation yard, there's no means to restore power there quickly. The corporation yard is where our professional maintenance crews reside and where they have all of the city equipment that can repair damage to our streets and sewers and storm drains, and they would also assist police and fire to restore our city's physical operation and our streets in operation in the event of a disaster. So also, if the city hall, for some reason, our emergency operations center was inoperable at City Hall, this would be a secondary location for an emergency operations center. And while it's not a glamorous-looking machine, the generator is imperative so that the corporation yard has the power to maintain disaster operations in that scenario. We currently don't have a comprehensive inventory of all 16 of our city buildings, and the project proposes to prepare a study for our building structural fitness, the mechanical equipment, electrical systems, and exterior finishes. So the facility's master plan would identify problems and prioritize fixes for future repairs and maintenance. Burton Park Phase Two project would be the beginning of a significant improvement to one of our most widely-used and popular parks. This is a start to study and plan for exciting new amenities, such as a performance stage, bocce ball courts, basketball court renovation, and landscaping, and should be, this is a good start to this important project. The Holly Street at 101 interchange project is the city's most ambitious and critical traffic improvement project in many years and into the future. And the intent of this project is to relieve traffic congestion on Holly Street and to improve flows on and off of US 101. The project would provide additional capacity, improve safety, and assist traffic flow from many of our largest employers. We have formally partnered with Caltrans to work through their rigorous review and oversight system and to meet the state standards for the highway there. Once we have what they call a project study report, we would be able to get a handle on the costs and move closer to potential construction of this project. Project is looking at the top-tier alternatives that were addressed in an extensive study that was done previously, including recommendations from the Transportation and Circulation Commission. We had community meetings, and it also went to the city council. It's a big project that requires lots of coordination with Caltrans, and construction is estimated to be about three and a half or four years away. The facade improvement program is sponsored by a redevelopment agency to provide financial incentives to increase private investment in the rehabilitation of facades in our city. And there are a large number of eligible improvements, as you can see there on the screen, and the current plan calls for the program to be focused on the El Camino Real corridor, but it can be moved around, and we intend to move it around the city after a certain amount of time. However, the program is intended to tie in, I think, very well with the next project. And this slide shows the conceptual plans approved by the city council for the landscaping and lighting improvements on the west side of El Camino Real. And this project would be from Olive Street on the north to Oak Street on the south side. The plan calls for new street trees, tree grates, irrigation, and as you can see, a very distinctive lighting, street lighting there. And this is a strong effort to improve the appearance of the Grand Boulevard as much as possible with the SAM Trans grant and the RDA funding that we have. And we're currently working with Caltrans to meet their engineering requirements. And we've applied for grant funding to actually try and continue this project from the end of this project all the way down to the end of San Carlos, so we'll keep our fingers crossed. Any development on the other side of El Camino Real would have to conform to these standards, these design standards. Another important and somewhat similar capital improvement project is the San Carlos East Side Community Connectivity Project. San Carlos received a $2.2 million grant. It was called the Transit for Livable Communities Grant from the MTC for a significant upgrade to Old County Road and East San Carlos Road there. And the project is in direct response to the concerns that we've heard over the years from east side residents about dilapidated and unsafe conditions to their sidewalks and their roadways and all the aging utilities there. The project would span Old County Road from Taylor on the north to Britton on the south and East San Carlos from Old County Road to Industrial Road. And the project uses a number of different funding sources to achieve this, and it would include the new sidewalks, undergrounding of utilities, would be new bike lanes, new street trees, street lights, and also bio swales. And that concludes staff presentation. We've got a number of people here this evening from various divisions of the city, departments of the city, to answer your questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Savay. So we're going to start with council questions, then we'll go to public comment, and we'll have discussions. So Mr. Grokha, would you like to start off?
Actually, not. But I do have some questions, but I don't want to start.
You don't want to start? Okay, Mr. Wallace, are you ready to go?
Yeah, I actually was able to talk to our city manager today. I noticed my questions. I do have comments on four items, and I'll reserve those at the end for comments.
Okay, Mr. Griselli.
I don't have any questions this time, Mr. Mayor. I may have, depending on the discussion we have, I may have some though.
Mr. Wallace?
Well, I'm not sure it falls into questions or comments, so let me start, and you guys can steer me if I need to go somewhere different. On the sewer CCTV inspection unit, I noticed that there was a vehicle in that proposal. I'm not sure who I'm talking, I'm just talking to everyone evidently. Yes, it's fine. I'll just stare at the podium as if I know what I'm doing, at least for the folks at home. So anyway, so, Mr. Savay, what I was wondering is whether or not that vehicle could be designated as either a clean fuel vehicle or, because I think it's some sort of a van or a transport vehicle, and if we could put that in the specifications for that item.
Sure, yes, we could do that. Well, you know, we'll look at biofuels most likely, the most likely option, but we'll look at electrical and see if there's any options there, too. Sure, we can try and spec that.
I think he's thinking of oil and oil.
Yeah, that might be.
Inside joke that the crowd will get on June 24th. Mr. Grokha, now are you ready for your questions?
Yeah, hopefully you haven't embarrassed me.
Sorry, I totally cut you off. I thought you were done, you had more.
So there's more. So on the item where it's installing a generated corporation yard for $155,000.
That's Mr. Savay again.
Mr. Savay, and also from Mr. Malp, in my conversations with Mr. Malp, one of the possible areas of consolidation regionally that's been discussed, or at least thrown out as an idea, that sounds like a good one to me, is consolidation of corp yards. So the question is, is that generator purchase $155,000, in the event that we can sort of pursue consolidation of corp yards with other cities, i.e. Redwood City in this case, which is, again, it'd be great to consolidate these kinds of things where we can, is that an expense that's worth spending if that idea could go forth in the next couple of years?
Well, if it does take a couple of years, and it could, to look at consolidation, there's still the interim, which if we have a disaster tomorrow, there's no way to restore power to the equipment and manpower that we have there. So for that reason alone, I think it's critical that we go ahead and do this. The other reason I think is, you know, as an asset, as an asset to the city, it's a movable asset. You can pick it up and take it to a different corp yard, or we could sell the asset. So I think that in any of those scenarios, it's important to kind of do it now, and then we have it, we can sell it, move it.
Great, thank you very much. And then the only other question, this is sort of for park and rec staff, I think I don't see Mr. Wong here, and I guess I wanted to be sure.
Guy is here.
Guy, I'm sorry, I just wanted to be sure that in a lot of these projects, I didn't have an opportunity this week to look at the Parker Recs master plan, and I guess I wanted to be sure that all of these were falling in priority order with what's in the Parker Recs master plan. And I will say that I'm really pleased, and I want to make sure everybody hears this part of it, because the second part of it, you guys are going to, but I'm really pleased that we're funding playgrounds and a lot of these different things, and it feels like we're finally able to make a comprehensive movement on quality of life things like the Parker Recs stuff, and I think it's fantastic. The only concern I have is that, as I think a lot of people know, we've spent a good portion of the last 10 years with exhaustive athletic field study. And one of my interests is not that we have to redo all of that hard and good work that's still existing. And I don't see anything in the next, like, three or four years that's either putting reserves toward replacement of athletic fields or anything like that in here. And my only concern is, as I think in the field study, if I'm not mistaken, we identified about four or five that are going to need substantial either irrigation or turf repair or turf replacement. And I just want to be sure that, I just, I was wondering, overall, priority-wise, I know it's been a priority to have that live alongside these other things, and again, I'm really pleased we're doing everything, but I'm just wondering if we do have a little bit of a miss in here as far as we may have a major half a million dollar, a million dollar project in the next two or three years that has been previously identified.
With the installation of the synthetic turf at Highlands, we instigated a fee for the user groups to replace that field or any other field. So we are building up a fund for exact that replacement you're talking about.
Okay, well, that's great to know. It'd be good, I think, if we can get maybe some sort of an idea what that accrual is and if there's going to be an expenditure in that regard that we're at least aware of it, so we know that it's on pace and on some sort of a schedule. So we're, and I don't know if that'd be appropriate to be reflected in here or not, but I'll leave it to staff. But it's just important that everybody knows that also comprehensive part of the plan. And one more question. Cedar Park renovation is $3.25 million, which is a big renovation. Is there, I guess I always want to be sure when we're upgrading our smaller parks that we're using a priority on the number, right? That's a big number, and we have a lot of needs in all of our parks. Has that been sort of vetted with design and been vetted by the Parker Rec Commission at this point?
It has not. It did come out of the master plan as a top priority, as there's nothing really there at Cedar Park.
Great, well, I'll leave it to the commission and staff to vet the process. Thanks very much. Thank you.
Mr. Wallace, Mr. Grokha.
Okay, thank you. Couple of questions. One is, has to do with the adult community center, and it was mentioned about solar panels going on that roof possibly in the future. So my question was if there was any consideration of doing the solar panels at the time of the re-roofing, and secondly, if staff had considered perhaps approaching some of these solar companies and doing a demonstration project since it is in our downtown. I know we did solar panels at the corp yard, but that's, you know, where no one knows where that is. I mean, you know, I know, but not everybody knows. Whereas the ACC is right here on San Carlos Avenue, folks can see it. A company might be interested in doing a demonstration project with us because it is so visible.
I think it's a great idea. We haven't discussed that at this point. But with the tile roof there that exists now, that wasn't even an option, now that we are going to a roof that would allow that, it's something we'd certainly look into.
Very good, okay, thank you on that. The other question I had has to do with the generator that was mentioned for the corp yard, and I'm feeling, I was thinking the same thing Mr. Lewis was, that I know there's been talk amongst the council at our strategic planning and so forth about the possibility of looking at handshaking with other communities on corporation yards and sort of put something into that that may not be there five years down the road. I understand your answer, but I want, whoever was.
Mr. Savay.
I'd like to pull you up here again, because a couple of things I want to understand. So my first question is, did I understand you to say then that the generation, the reason for the corp yard is to keep some of our equipment going if there's a, for instance, power gets shut off because of a storm, but we have equipment out there that needs to be charged up or something, or we need operations going there at the corp yard, and the generator would help us to do that?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. Because I just want to throw this out as an idea, perhaps we don't want to take this on now, but the other two places in town that I think of where we might consider generators, backup generators for emergency purposes and for the community is, I know, I think we have one here already, correct? But the other two locations I think of that are known to the community is the youth center, and the other is L'Oreala Park for those who live on the east side. And I'll give you an example of what I'm thinking of, is there are sometimes power outages when we have a heat wave. And I know I've seen in some communities where they open up things like a youth center and have the air conditioning on, especially for elderly who, you know, get themselves in a health issue when there's a heat wave like that and they can't get to air conditioning. So if we considered that and thought of that in the future, I suppose that'd be something for the council to discuss, but I just throw that out there as an idea. And then the other thing I wanted to ask about, I'm going to speak for one of our applicants, actually, Mr. Eaton, when he was on the council and when he applied for this fill-in, he reminded me that he just, he talked a lot during his years on council about utility underbounding. And I know we're probably far away from that still, even though he was talking about that, you know, when Andy, what would you say, 20 years ago?
It was in middle school.
Middle school. But perhaps we could start with something from our capital improvement funds that would deal with planning and maybe looking at neighborhoods and neighborhoods that might want to buy into that and assess themselves, so we could start that process of undergrounding the utilities. As Mr. Eaton said, it's a real bonus to folks when it comes to their property values, because if you go through a neighborhood where the, all those lines are underground, you really notice the difference.
Mr. Savay, could I tag on to that?
Sure, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you. One question I have for you in that respect also, Mr. Savay, is on the, it's on the last page of the report, it talks about the industrial road underground utilities district, $430,000 came out of RDA funding for undergrounding utilities. And my question is, is that, I think it's PG refunding for it, is that specific to have to be spent in RDA area, or is that underground utilities funds that we could spend anywhere in the city?
Yeah, I think you're referring to the rural 2A funds, and those are meant to be spent in the RDA, but if you come up with a compelling reason to use it on a project outside, there's a potential to use it outside the redevelopment agency area.
Because I think one thing that we could do as a start as a council, probably in the form of a bond measure or something down the road, with the underground utilities in San Carlos, we couldn't do anything probably bigger to impact property values in this town. When you drive around, you start to just become aware of them. They're huge, and they're really visible. So I think it's a great discussion for the future to start talking about what's a way we might be able to tackle that thing. I think it's one of the best things that we could do for the city.
Just to clarify for the council, on August, and I'll make sure staff, staff? Mr. Malp, since we are, it seems like we're all agreeing on that, can we make sure that that is brought up? We are going to be doing our three-year goals and plans at our next strategic planning retreat, and that seems like a perfect time to start talking about that, so just to make sure.
Absolutely, and we'll begin to gather some information so we're a little better informed on the subject for the next time the council wants to talk about this.
Mr. Grokha, do you have more questions?
No more questions.
Okay, so it's my turn. So I found out my first complaint about being in the middle, you're last, and everyone steals your questions. I only have a few, and we'll start with Mr. Savay, since you're going to handle some of the bigger planning, even if it's the adult community and center, that'll go through your department. I just want to make sure that when we are doing these larger plans, like the adult community center or issues like that, that we are actively using our climate action plan, which we put through. It's a great plan, it's not being used as often as some of us would like, but I would like to make sure that those start at any project the city does, regardless if it's the adult community center or Wheel Plaza or whatever, they start at the implementation process. At the very beginning, we start focusing on that plan and making sure that we abide by it and try to maybe do a little better. So then the question is, and also with energy efficiency, I know all these projects will come back to us, so we'll eventually talk about them singly, but I would make sure that we were going to our green community and using the best business practices when we do energy efficiency, especially when it comes to solar panels and issues like that. And I would like maybe for a future discussion to talk about what we do with the money that we save from energy efficient, like solar panels and all those issues, and if there's a way we can create a fund where that money would go to buy more of those and to become more green and become more energy efficient, if we can take the money we save and plug it back into that sort of development. And then, two questions that I have, or, no, one question. We got a grant for the senior center. I don't know if this goes to you or Guy, or I need to wait for Doug to discuss this, but we had a grant for a senior center to fix the lighting to make it more energy efficient. Have we spent that money, or is it plugged in somewhere in here?
We have not spent that money. Last I know, that it was going to engineering department, and he was finalizing the allocation to us.
Okay, so we'll see that at some point coming forward in the future?
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you, Guy. That's all the questions I have. I have some comments for discussion. So we will go to public comments. We're going to start, we have Suzanne Emerson, followed by Pat Bell, who I do not see, and those, those are the only two speaker slips I have for this item, so. Suzanne, you have two minutes.
Suzanne Emerson of San Carlos, for San Carlos Green. I thank Mayor Klein for already raising the issue of the climate action plan and our general plan, including the requirement that major remodels to government agency buildings comply with relevant green building standards. And so we look forward to seeing the energy efficiency, water conservation, resource conservation aspects of these remodels programs that are, have been discussed today. I thank Councilmember Growcock for raising the issue of solar panels. If that actually appears on the not funded at this time category, but we'd really encourage the city to go ahead with doing a cost evaluation of the return on investment in solar panels while paying for energy efficiency is usually even more cost effective than solar panels. Solar panels do have that return on investment, so it could be bringing back to us within a fairly short amount of time, money that we could be spending on other things on the not funded list, like more trees or the Safe Routs to School program. And there are currently some bulk purchase programs that municipalities are going together on to get large amounts of solar panels onto multiple municipal buildings. Also, a low interest loan, I think is 3% program just recently came out, so there is maybe a good time to get a good return on investment. Thank you.
Ms. Emerson, we have, Pat Bell is not here, but I see Bonnie McClure is coming to the podium, so you have two minutes, Bonnie. Thank you.
Two items. Today, on the internet, I received a notice from Sustainable San Mateo County, and they're advertising their program with a subcontractor that's a solar, solar panel contractor, and it's on a lease basis. It's just something to investigate. It just came out. And then the other thing is that our neighborhood up above Agüello Park on Northam had a meeting with PG and E about 10 years ago, and we all wanted to know how much we could pay them if they would underground. And they would not listen to us. They were just really, you know, they spent about two hours at our house, and there were a lot of people, you know, begging them, you know, if we pay for it, will you do it? So I'm real excited that the city is thinking about, because you need the cloud of the city. The neighbors don't have much cloud.
Thank you, Ms. McClure. Are there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll start with discussion. Mr. Growcock, would you like to start this time, or should I go to the other side?
On discussion?
Yeah.
I have nothing, so just-
Okay. Mr. Lewis?
Well, just, when we're talking about the solar panels for the Adult Community Center, the other thing we can do, even if we don't put in the panels, we can prepare that roof for the installation of panels, which would be lesser expense to start with, but much easier when we came up on the funding. So the other half step would be just to sort of prep those, so I'd leave that to staff to consider as well. Go ahead, Brian.
Can I comment a bit on that? A year ago, before we launched into our budget balancing project, we were working with joint venture Silicon Valley's Climate Protection Group on the group's solar purchase program that I believe Suzanne was talking about earlier. And we have had some discussion with them on that. What that is, is what they call a power purchase agreement, or a PPA. And what it, the way it works is that a vendor or vendors come out and evaluate which buildings are appropriate for solar. I think as Guy indicated, both the City Hall building and the ACC initially were not viewed as candidates because of the type of roofing material used. If it's changed, as Guy indicated, that might change. It's also a function of where the trees are and that sort of thing. But if the buildings are candidates, what happens is the vendors, in many cases, will put in the systems in exchange for getting the savings paid back over a period of time. So we're still very interested in that program, and I think that as staff bandwidth improves later in the year, once we've finished the budget balancing work, that's very possible, and it may need a minor appropriation, but not, not a full-blown appropriation, as I think the council's envisioning.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Lewis?
The only other, and I'm not sure how much of a discussion it is, but I noticed, I note that there's a trails study that's sort of been underway, but we don't currently have any trail improvements funded. So it's just sort of, I just like to note that it may be on the cusp of that study that we don't really know where to put some of that funding yet, but we certainly know that we need some of that funding. We also have a couple of great volunteer organizations that help maintain that. So it is also money that we can contribute for materials, and there's a great volunteer force there. So I would just look for that opportunity for staff and perhaps look for that opportunity if we have some funding in this, because I know that we have trails that need work in three or four of the parks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Gressely.
I would just say that we've got a number of studies that we're going to be doing, I think, you know, to look at what we need to do, and I would hope, and I'm sure staff will do this, I remember even when I came on four and a half years ago, the amount of money we spend on studies and consultancies, and a huge amount of money. And hopefully, I don't know if it is, certainly in construction, we've gotten better prices. I know working out with the sewer folks, we've gotten under budget on a lot of things, and I'm hopeful that, same could be said on that side, and we have budget items, and I'm hopeful we can, we can be under budget on these, because those are the things that, for every dollar we can save there, we can actually utilize it to put it in, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gressely. Mr. Ross?
Yeah, thank you. By the way, excellent report by staff. It's nice to have one-page summary of every one of our capital plans, and it's nice to spend time talking about all this stuff, capital we haven't been able to do for a while. So I have just four items. The first and the last may have some impact on whether or not we should be approving dollars or not, and the middle two items kind of deal more with our, our scope and our process to make sure we, we think about these things and, and the topics. The first one deals with the Cranfield proposal. It's just a small amount of 15,000, but actually, there was a little inconsistency. The report talks about this project will evaluate whether or not a traffic signal is due for the intersection at Cranfield and San Carlos Avenue. And I think Mr. Survey talked about looking at alternatives. Looking at alternatives is fine. At a traffic signal, a couple of issues that come to mind is that, again, the last traffic signal I believe we put in was just up the street one block where the Adult Community Center is, and San Carlos Avenue. I think it was planned to be about 150 or closer to 200,000, I think, Brian, is what we spent on that. I look at, looked at Google Map and actually, if you looked at Al's, he extended it a little further, we actually do have a major intersection at Dartmouth. And Cranfield comes three houses later, and I'm not sure of a traffic engineer that would actually approve putting another traffic signal, you know, 200 to 250 feet later. You know, this, of course, traffic light gets lots of volumes, you know, 12, 14 hours a day. There are, I counted, I think there's about a dozen homes at Cranfield. So my concern is spending 15,000, but we're actually looking at spending 200,000. Maybe a little bit more research, but I would truly like to get an engineer to say, are we going to be putting a traffic light? You know, we went with Belmont, of course, did a lot of this. We went from four lanes to two lanes. We put more stop signs. Now we're going to put a traffic signal 250 feet later? It just doesn't make any sense to me. So I'd like, before we spend any money on this, I'd like to have, you know, an engineer step back and, and look at, you know, where are we going with this? Is this possible, or are we really just, you know, pleasing the neighborhood, spending some investment of research, but we really don't have plans to do anything?
Councilmember Ross, one of the things I was excited to see in the presentation was the consideration of a roundabout. And boy, if I ever saw an area that might benefit from a roundabout, it might be that area as a traffic calming device.
I love roundabouts.
So-
You travel through France all day long, you never stop at a light.
Right.
And they all make it without dents.
So-
Definitely. The second item, again, there's, there's no adjustment to budget, but I think it's very, very important. There are three actual budgeted items, and I'm going to talk about the security and security cameras and panic buttons. You may have saw one where we talked about remodeling the lobby, and there was discussion a year ago, when we remodeled, do we want cameras or not? And I'm not promoting cameras. I'm very mixed from a privacy point of view, and yet if something happened, it'd be nice to have a camera of watching who comes in and out of City Hall. There's panic buttons as a proposal here, in which people will hit a panic button, not only in chambers, but throughout City Hall, and a camera automatically goes on. And then there's the library access. I'm just asking staff to kind of coordinate and come up with, with, you know, work with your employees, see what other city halls are doing, and having some consistency and standard plans on how we manage security, whether or not includes cameras or not, in each of these three capital areas. Because, of course, the panic button was pretty much a standalone one, where the other two, you could include levels of security. So that's, again, kind of a scope and a, of how we look, make sure we coordinate security on all three, three of those. The third of four is a very simple one. It mentioned, we have a, an employee lounge, I think it's called. There's no big video TVs in there. It's basically a place where they could get away from their desk and, and have lunch. I think there's an opportunity, when I think about eating, I also think about exercising. The old police station has a workout room, and I think about lunch, I think about exercise, and I think about really taking care of our employees, really giving them the best they can have in, in our facilities, coordinating those. Should the lunchroom be next to the existing exercise room, or vice versa? You know, we're looking at subleasing some of that space. Should the lunchroom have a view versus now it doesn't? Again, coordinating adding on exercise with the lunchroom and make the best bang for the buck to, to make it a really a pleasant place and give our employees some options to, to both have lunch and exercise, or maybe just exercise and eat an apple, or whatever, whatever. And then the last one is, I think, the most important one, because it does impact dollars. And the last comment is, and Al had a page, Mr. Survey had a page on it. He talked about the 101 Holly Exchange. And, and this is actually, there's another part of, of a capital that actually talks about, not only at the freeway where the roundabouts are, but backing up through Holly, staging at, at Industrial and Holly. This whole project talks about $10 million, and it's probably eight or 10 years worth of work. And I feel that as a council, I want to make sure that we have visibility, and we spend some time talking about this. I think it's, it's very important because it's, it's a gateway to our, our city northbound, or getting out of Holly, it provides the only northbound access to 101. We have, you know, In-N-Out and Pamp going in, there's going to be increased volumes. There still is on the table a hotel site down at that intersection at Industrial, and how that can impact traffic. And with our, you know, our Public Works Director, there was a Plan A up to about two years ago when they did the Pamp study. Some of that's changed now, on just thinking about traffic and what to do and, and whether or not, in fact, I talked to a gentleman today, I returned a call, I received a call on my voicemail, who, who works in the business of traffic, and he had a lot of concerns about getting rid of the, the turnaround, what do they call them, the-
Overleaf?
Cloverleaf. You know, the cloverleafs. There's, there's pros and cons to this. So, again, we are, from approving this thing, I just want to make sure with everything going on, in fact, another item, bicycles. Our prior Public Works Director, one of the questions I asked him in our last presentation on this, was, well, it's very expensive. I think it was almost $2 or $3 million just to provide bicycle access across Holly, and yet it's very critical. And I asked the question, well, have we talked to Redwood Shores or Redwood City? They're the other half of that bike lane. And he said, no, that's a good idea. So there's just a lot of, I think, thinking with the experts, and I think our involvement in planning this key, I won't call it intersection, I call it a key part of our city that starts San, San Carlos. I'll get off the soapbox a little bit, but, but I really do, do think on this item, I want visibility and I want involvement from all of us.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ross. Mr. Growcock?
Since we are, you know, discussing, discussing, and it's a study session, I wanted to segue a little bit on what Mr. Ross was talking about, the 101 Holly interchange. And myself, with that project, there's a couple of things that I think are really important. One is, like it or not, Holly is our gateway to the 101. And I think, just like we did when we did the grade separation, we went a little extra and did something that looked nice and fit with our community and the architecture of our community. And I think when we do the 101 interchange in the future, to do the same thing, so it doesn't just look like an ordinary interchange, that it really says something, that this is San Carlos, this is our front door, and welcome to our community. And going along with that, I think something that needs to be given some thought, in addition to the infrastructure itself, the hardscape, if you will, is the softscape. Currently, it's just run over with, you know, oleander bushes and I think some, one of those big weeds that we got from Australia. Anyways, those big trees. Eucalyptus, yeah. And so looking at that intersection also in terms of a unified landscape plan, introducing trees on, on both sides. And part of that, I know you said it's Redwood Shores, but part of that interchange, it's a little confusing what's San Carlos, what isn't, but for, for the part that we, is incorporated into our city, we should look at, at the softscape. And if we could work with Redwood City on their portion, I think we should do that as well. And the last part is what you had mentioned about the bicycles, and it's true, if you look at Redwood Shores, it's a very bike-friendly area. When they put that in, they put in bike lanes on almost all the major streets and thoroughfares over there. And the shame is that it's very unsafe currently to use Holly Street as a crossover. However, and I know our former city engineer, Public Works Director, was looking at a design that incorporated the bicycle paths. I, I'm not convinced it's necessarily the, the best solution, and I think it's a draft plan at this point. But I do think it's important that whatever we do there, incorporate bicycle and pedestrian crossing so that it's safe. What I would hate to see done is, is what Belmont ended up with, which is an individual flyover that's just for bikes and pedestrians. I can tell you from sitting on BPAC, we turned that project down, primarily because to go over, to come off the ground and go over a freeway just for bicycle pedestrian is hugely expensive. It eats up a lot of money, and instead, if you can incorporate it into the, the bridge that's being built for automobiles and trucks and so forth, that's a much better way to go.
Thank you, Mr. Growcock. So I don't have as many comments, because again, my councilmembers have taken most of them from me, and it's a great discussion we're having here. Actually, I do have one follow-up question from Ms. Men den Hall. With the panic buttons that you were discussing, do we have panic buttons in our other centers, like the youth center and the Adult Community Center?
No.
Is that something we're going to look at? Because those are two centers where we have our most at-risk populations.
Yes, we can look at those.
Okay. That was just something that came up. I thought if we're going to have panic buttons anywhere, if we're going to have them here, we should have them there as well. Okay, that's my own question. So then, when it comes to discussion, I agree with pretty much everything that's been said. Mr. Ross and Mr. Growcock, I definitely think we have to look at some sort of bike fix for Holly. I, two things in here that made me think about that, is I drive my dog to the dog park and- Two things in here that made me think about that, is I drive my dog to the dog park in Redwood Shores, and you notice the change immediately, the minute you get into Redwood Shores. And it's a large boulevard, and a lot more bike traffic, and it's a lot more accessible for everyone. And also, like, how there's funding continuing for the dog park in here, so I don't have to go to Redwood Shores to take my dog to the dog park. It'd be nice to stay in town. But I definitely agree with you, with the two of you on that. And pretty much with everything else that's being said, I think we have a chance now that we've pulled out of this budget mess to get in, to really get into our capital improvement projects and really do some great stuff for the community, that I think the community is going to notice very quickly and start to recognize that we are starting to fix a lot of our ongoing issues. I think we have a chance to be a leader when it comes to going green, doing solar panels. I don't think just the adult community center. I mentioned it before, when Burn Park Phase II got initially presented to us. If we're going to build a stage, I think we have to have the roof be solar panels to pay for the lighting of the stage, and possibly the basketball courts and the tennis courts as well. So I think we have a really good chance. And so the public knows, we're not just taking this and saying, that's it, that's the last time we're going to talk about this. All of these things will come back to us for much longer discussions per item. So that's when you'll hear more of these intricate details come out. So I really don't have anything else to say. If we, we just need to accept this report, correct, Mr. Malby?
This was a study session for the purpose of providing staff with direction on preparing the capital budget, which we'll come back to in a couple of weeks as part of the budget adoption. I think we've gotten all the feedback we need this evening from you. I'm comfortable that we're on the right track with the capital budget, and we'll bring it forward to you for adoption.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Malby. So with that, we will move on to Item 11A. It's unfinished business, meaning to approve amendments to the city's strategic plan and six-month objective matrix. Ms. Mendenhall.
Good evening again. So tonight, I'm going to review for you where we're at with the strategic plan. If council members, on Friday, February 18th, we met with the city manager and department directors for the 11th time in a day-long facilitated discussion of the city's strategic issues and goals. This report will serve as the June monthly report and the third status report. So there are five requested revisions this month. There's been one that's been added after the staff report was distributed. The first one, or all of these date changes noted here, they assume that the council elects to cancel the August 8th council meeting, which is on the agenda later tonight. So the first change is the date the administrative services director secures the capital improvement project software to manage both funding and project delivery and maintain history thereof. We're moving that, requesting that date be moved from July 15th to August 22nd. The RFP has already been issued, and we're waiting for response from interested vendors. We may need to schedule some demos, so that's why that date has changed. The date that the Public Works Director present to council for direction of feasibility report regarding the formation of a stormwater utility from August 15th to August 22nd. The date the administrative services director investigate website redesign and enhancements and recommend options to the city council in conjunction with city's marketing and branding and business retention and attraction project. Moving that from August 15th to August 22nd. This was also just discussed as part of the capital budget. The date the city manager present to council a review of the customer service policy, moving that from August 15th to August 22nd. And the one that was added this evening is the date the assistant city manager present to council the pros and cons of a plastic bag and styrofoam man from June 15th to August So as noted in your staff report, there's 14 objectives that have been completed. This is a list, and the details are also in the staff report. I'm just going to quickly flip through the pages here. So as a summary, we've had 14 items that are completed from the strategic plan. We've got, we have five requested revisions to the dates, and all other tasks remain on target. Our next strategic plan is scheduled for August 29th.
Thank you, Ms. Mendenhall. Do we have any questions? So Grillcott?
Two questions. One is, I didn't see, we had an electronics policy that we were going to be looking at, and I didn't see it on any of the matrix. How it seems to have fallen off.
That was captured.
Yeah, it was.
I'll have to look into that.
Okay. I don't want that to go away. And it disappeared. And it was supposed to come up next month, I believe.
To jump in, because I'm sitting on that subcommittee, Ms. Mendenhall, we're going to have to change out the subcommittee, because Mr. Ahmad was on it with myself. So I'll be grabbing a council member, probably, hopefully, at the next meeting or so, when we start filling the spots that were left, what he was covering, and then we'll get back to you on that. But it's been a little bit of a bump.
Yeah. It must be just a typo, as the city attorney and I were just discussing that exact item at the beginning of the meeting. So it's certainly on our radar, may not be on our plan tonight, but we'll get it back.
Okay. Please do. And then the other, the only other question I had was on Item 13 of 14 objectives, objectives completed. Sorry to have forgotten this, but what, this is the, discuss the issue of littering in downtown San Carlos and whether the current ordinance and its enforcement should be changed. And I have forgotten what it was we did on that. And it's an important item, and I don't want to see it just, oh, yeah, we looked at it and, you know, that's it, because it's important.
Mr. Malby, if I'm correct, that was going to be in our report about our complete streets, right?
That's my understanding, yes.
What about what now?
Our complete streets, that'll be in August, correct?
I don't have the exact date off the top of my head.
Or state of the streets, sorry, yeah.
So we've looked at it, but it is coming back to us?
It's coming back, yeah.
Okay.
And we were able to find your item in the plan. It's the first item on the enhance the community awareness, involvement, and engagement objective. So it is there.
It is there.
Yeah, it might be hiding a little bit, but it's
By June 30th is what it says.
Yeah, by June 30th. Assistant, so we're going to, we're going to have to, that's probably belonged in the change here tonight, so.
Okay, so that date will have to be revised.
Yeah. And in fact, if on the fly, we can push that one back, because we're going to need a new subcommittee member, as the mayor pointed out. So I think we can safely amend that one to August 22nd as well, if the council agrees.
Okay.
So, and I'll make sure those changes come to the next council meeting, so we can put people in the spaces that were left by Mr. Ahmad.
Very good. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Okay. We don't have any public comments left. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to comment, here's your chance. Seeing none, is there any discussion? Any comments? Okay, the only comment I'm going to make, and I'm going to just be a repeat of the last time. I know when we, sometimes things happen and we have to push agenda items, but I would prefer, if we can get a chance, to not push them the night they're supposed to be presented, to try to push them in advance, so people know that they're no longer coming forward. And it's, again, it's the plastic bags. This is the second item that's been pushed, but I'll just repeat my comment.
And I appreciate that. We'll always make every effort, though it's not always within our control.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we will move to new business.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I think we need to approve the amendments.
We need to approve the amendments.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments to the city's strategic plan and six-month objectives matrix.
Second.
Second, Mr. Grillcott. Madam clerk?
Counselor Vasili.
Yes.
Counselor Grillcott.
Yes.
Counselor Royce.
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes. Okay. Now moving to new business, 12A, consideration of awarding a consulting contract to Calendar and Associates in the amount of $569,419 for urban design and engineering services related to the improvements on Old County Road and East San Carlos Avenue. Ms. Nelson.
Good evening, mayor and council. Well, I'm happy, after the discussion on the CIP, to present to you one of those projects that we will move forward to on and have significant change in a part of the community that hasn't seen this kind of change in a while. Tonight, we are asking you to approve an award of contract for design and engineering services to Calendar and Associates to move forward on the project that Mr. Seve talked about, the East Side Connectivity Project, which I'll go over a little bit. He showed a number of the slides, but I'll do this a little bit, too. It's 1.9 miles of the stretch of Old County Road and about 0.27 miles of East San Carlos between Old County Road and Industrial. It includes contiguous sidewalks, pedestrian bulbous, curb lamps at the corners, widening sidewalks to seven feet, decorative pavement at the crosswalks, new trees, there aren't any right now, decorative streetlights, planting areas for stormwater treatment, and that's particularly between Old County Road and the tracks on the Old County Road frontage and on the north side of East San Carlos Avenue. Utility undergrounding, so you will be using all of your utility undergrounding fund. We're asking you to do that with this project. That fund does replenish itself, but at this point, we'd like you to designate it for this project. Bike Boulevard on East San Carlos Avenue, and that will join bike improvements to be made to Old County Road with those that are on Industrial. And traffic signal at Industrial Road. So as background, just as a reminder, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission announced availability of transportation for livable communities funds. This comes out of a Caltrans project. And in April last year, you directed us to go forward with applying for the grant. Very soon after that, staff and neighbors conducted a walk audit. We went out and actually looked at the things that ought to be in the grant application to make the neighborhood better. And in July last year, MTC awarded you $2.21 million. Since that time, we've been working with Caltrans to get the environmental clearance, and most recently, an RF request for qualifications process, followed by a request for proposals process. And we conducted interviews and negotiated with Calendar and Associates and actually used a neighborhood and business steering committee to work with us. That selection committee recommends that you approve this contract. The selection committee beside city staff included Dimitri Vandelos of the East San Carlos, Greater East San Carlos neighborhood, Scott Camper, who represented the chamber and the business community on Old County Road, and Tony Panero of the Transportation and Circulation Commission. So now I'm just going to show you some of the graphics. This is at Sylvan and Old County Road. Here would be a bulbous with stormwater treatment and planting. And I wanted to show you the walk audit, and we did this last April, and I know Sam is in the audience, and his two daughters also came along with us on that walk audit. So we got the perspective of what would it, you know, what would it take for the kids to be using this road and use the Arroyo undercrossing and get to the west side of the community, or use the undercrossing at the train station? So the child perspective was really enlightening to us. Then, Old County Road at Commercial, I just want to show you this one, that we will be improving the crosswalk. And in this area is the Arroyo undercrossing, which was a lovely design implemented with the grade crossing. Either side of that design, however, kind of lacks the connectivity to get to and from places. Old County Road at the Train Depot is a big part of this project. There will be a, let's see, shuttle and passenger drop-off. There'll be a lighted pedestrian in the pavement-lighted crosswalk. And then, of course, the street trees and, I just want to show you some of the graphics here. There's a view which shows looking up San Carlos Avenue and this new crosswalk lit. Looking south from this same location, down Old County Road, this is kind of the existing condition. The bikes sort of take matters, and to their own safety, there's parking, there's two travel lanes. This very narrow sidewalk, it's actually five and a half feet, but with the telephone poles in the middle of it, it's about two. So the, our image here still shows the overhead utilities in place, but those will be undergrounded as a companion to this project. And there will be dedicated sharrows and narrowing of the travel lanes. East San Carlos Avenue at industrial intersection, which is up here, there'll be a pedestrian-activated intersection. On this south, no, on the north side will be a stormwater treatment. We won't be undergrounding on East San Carlos. This is back of fences from most people's houses, and we did not have the money to underground. But we will improve it with stormwater treatment. On the south side will be tree wells and new sidewalk. So this is kind of the existing condition, looking down East San Carlos Avenue towards Industrial. You can see it's, lots going on there with traffic and parking and no sidewalk and bikes. And once again, we would be putting sidewalks in this location, and then these tree wells, and this would be the stormwater treatment area. This is the cross-section up at the north end, next to the residential neighborhoods, just showing the existing condition. And that we would have a shared lanes for bike and cars, a parking and a much wider sidewalk. This graphic was also in Mr. Seve's presentation, and shows kind of the features that will be implemented, including this bike boulevard that you just talked about in your CIP. The contract itself is very broad. It includes not only this project, but the integration of this project with two bicycle grants we have, and an underground utility project, which we have to set up an underground utility district for. And they will be doing project management for that, as well as design of all of the features of the project. We will come back to you during the final design, and also with a bidding package, and hopefully, construction could start September next year. There were community concerns expressed about reduction of parking and the trade-offs of parking for widened sidewalks. This project includes lots of community input. And we, in our negotiations with Calendar, the steering committee asked them to really pay attention to this, and we feel they have. We will keep a steering committee in place. They will conduct a business owners' meeting. They will use probably a Survey Monkey, if any of you have used that, an electronic tool where people can make comments through that, that kind of electronic tool. They'll hold community workshop. One of them will be an open house, probably at Loyola Park. It will be at least a four-hour event. People can come and go and help design the specifics of the project. There'll be a second community workshop. They'll also be at the farmer's market at least twice with booths set up. And we will go to the Transportation and Circulation Commission and back to you before the final plan. Just on the funding, it is this grant from the TLC. It's two bikeway grants that we already had in place, and it is the commitment of $1.8 million of your underground funds. We augment that. There's a 20% match showed with the two items here with the one asterisk. Part of it from Prop 1B allocation, which we already have in place, and then some small augmentation from the redevelopment agency budget to make the 20%. There's also a couple of things where we have to put money forward, because they're not covered by the grant, and that's creation of the underground district, that split between the general fund and the capital fund, $45,000 each. And then, there is something I learned about the utility covers on the streetway. That's a specialized expertise that we need to augment the grant with another $25,000 for that. So we're recommending tonight that you approve this contract for Calendar and Associates to start right away and help us design this project.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
I'd also like to mention that Brian Fletcher, the president of Calendar and Associates, is here to answer any questions also.
Okay, thank you. So what we'll do is we'll do council questions, public comments, and then we'll discuss. So, will you go first this time, Mr. Grillcott?
Sure.
All right. Are you going to have questions for Ms. Nelson or for Calendar and Associates?
I'll just ask the questions, and I'm not sure
I'll just ask the questions, and I'm not sure who they're for. First, I'll just start with a comment, and I'll keep beating this until Mr. Malpigh and his staff gets it. When we have things like Ms. Nelson just mentioned, the underground fund and said that $1.8 million would be spent, of what total? So that, give us the checkbook a little bit sometimes when we do these things, if you understand what I'm, my meaning there.
I do understand what you're meaning, but I believe in this instance, this is a capital project, so it's standard.
But do we have money left over in that fund when we use the $1.8? No? It's all of it?
Yeah, I mean, the fund itself has other projects in it, but this is the amount that's been dedicated for this particular project.
All right, I take it back.
Okay, thanks.
For this one.
But we often talk about that at the staff level, so we're trying to more and more ingrain it in our thought process.
There you go. I have a question about, I know the community over there has a concern with Old County Road and the speed. And so my question is, would a speed survey be done in conjunction with this project? And would it be done before the project or after the project or anytime during this whole process? It's been noted oftentimes, just as you're coming up, that I think the city of Belmont, Old County Road is 30 miles an hour, and in San Carlos, it's 35, and it seems like a high speed for that stretch of roadway.
Right, right. And I'll let Brian Fletcher talk about that. BKF is also a sub to this project, and there are, there's lots of expertise. We will be widening the travel lane width, which does tend to calm traffic. I don't know if it would change.
I'm sorry, you meant to say, because I saw the cue from back here, you're narrowing the lane.
Narrowing, narrowing, sorry, yes. Narrowing the travel width, and that may change the warrant, which might change the travel speed, but I'm not sure if that's in the contract.
The other key consultant to mention is Hexagon Traffic Engineers, who also prepared an analysis of bike lanes along the entire corridor. So we do have that expertise available into that, although there wasn't a specific speed study or analysis that was part of the scope. You know, I think at the, by utilizing our subconsults to see if that would be an appropriate thing to do, you know, we will definitely make that recommendation to them. Just like Deborah mentioned, there are going to be several improvements incorporated into this that actually work to calm traffic, namely, reduction of traffic lanes, additional of bike lane striping as well as sharow striping within the shared lanes worked to that. There's going to be a number of areas at intersections that we're adding bowl bouts that will extend the curb into the parking lanes. So that will work to effectively reduce, reduce, number one, the perception of the asphalt, which slows down traffic, and also, at the same time, physically reduce curb-to-curb dimensions to, again, reduce traffic speeds as well.
But so bottom line, though, a study may be done afterwards, or there might be?
Bottom line, there's no specific study that has been included as part of this scope for a speed analysis.
So if there was any hope on the community's part of actually seeing a speed limit sign that says 30 as opposed to 35, where does that, where would that stand?
I think what will come out of this is, and through our discussions with the group, is that we included much more community outreach as part of this process. So I think as that, as that input comes in from the community, we'll have to analyze as a group, you know, what existing studies are there that we could refer to that we may not need to do a specific study for the corridor or specific study for that element. Then there might be specifics that we may need to, and we'll make the recommendations at staff at that time if that input does come in from the community.
If I can jump in here just a second and maybe add a little clarity. I think in my experience with these types of projects where we do anticipate some of the features resulting in traffic calming, it might be a good idea to do a traffic study at the end of the project. After those, as you're aware, those, the studies will dictate within five miles an hour, plus or minus, what speed limits are. So if we have an anticipation that the improvements here could result in calming the traffic, some of the results we may see from a study afterwards could result in a lower speed limit for that particular street. So we might recommend bringing that back next year as part of the CIP, if you'd like to see that. And I saw a lot of heads nodding up there about that, so I anticipate that that's a study that we have to do every three to five years anyways.
Okay. Another question had to do with, and this may not apply because I'm not sure what the extent of the project is, how far down we're going on Old County Road when we're going north. But I know currently, I drive that way all the time because I take my son to Twin Dragon, the Kung-Fu place. And we don't bike, by the way, because it feels so unsafe to ride bicycles down there. But as you get further down more north, it seems like the pavement, you know, you're at one level when you're up against the rail corridor, and you're at another level when you're at the residences, and there's like a fold in the street. And that also tends to force vehicles over one direction towards the sidewalk, if you will. It just seems very unsafe, and I don't know if that, if this project will be addressing any of those pavement concerns or not.
I want to add to that also, your question there, and then Brian can speak to, you probably also go across those railroad spur tracks.
Yes.
And part of the project does see those being taken out as well. And then I'll have Brian respond to the repaving that happens after the improvements are put
As part of this project, there is a pavement rehabilitation plan and study. We also have a geotechnical engineer that is part of the team to evaluate the existing cross section of the street, to do borings to find out how many, what happens as the crown of the road ends up after you resurface and resurface and resurface, it gets, it gets a little exaggerated. So that will be part of the study.
Very good, thank you. And those are all my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Grocott. Mr. Royce?
No questions.
Mr. Resili?
No questions.
Mr. Lewis?
I have no questions either. So we will go to public comments? See, now I've seen a big thumbs up from Mr. Heitzberg, so thank you. We'll note that. Are there any comments for discussion?
Nice job on it.
Looks great.
Okay, well, seeing everyone's pretty content with this, can we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, just one, I would make sure your motion includes authority for the city manager to sign the agreement.
Okay. So whoever gives a motion, I hope you hear that.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to a consulting contract to Calendar and Associates, an amount of $569,419 for urban design and engineering services related to the improvements, excuse me, on Old County Road and East San Carlos Avenue, and authorize the city manager to sign such a document.
I'll second that, okay. So no further discussion. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Resili?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item 12B. This is acceptance of preliminary site plans and transaction term sheet for potential development of Wheeler Plaza property generally bounded by San Carlos Avenue and Walnut, Cherry and Laurel Streets. Authorization to prepare a disposition and development agreement and environmental review document to form a Laurel Plaza advisory committee and to release a request for proposals for development of Laurel Plaza. And then we have a BI that we'll get to as well.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight is a milestone event for the Wheeler Plaza project. However, it's a milestone event in the progress of the project, and we're not asking you to approve the project as a whole. Rather, we're recommending that the project proceed on its path. Tonight's discussion does not include the architectural part of the project, but it does include the general layout of the site plans and the development parameters of the project. Following the last two community meetings, we've taken what we've heard and also hearing from others, the council and stakeholder meetings, and we've developed this concept with these comments in mind, and it's a concept that is developing over time. I'd like to make a few introductions this evening. John McMore, the president of Silverstone Communities, is here in the audience. He's here to answer any questions. We also have Mark Swicki is the city's economic development and housing manager, and we have Frank Spevesek with RSG Group. He's our economist, and I'm going to ask him to help me with this presentation tonight when we get to market support, public investment, fiscal impacts. So this is what you see on the screen this evening is our agenda, and we're going to talk about the project from a number of different angles. What I thought I would start with is a discussion about how the project site fits in with the greater downtown area. And this red line represents the historic retail core of the downtown, which is the 600 through 800 blocks of downtown. You see Laurel Street here. San Carlos Avenue is located here. It goes through the first two blocks from El Camino Real, and that is the terminus there of San Carlos Avenue as it terminates into the Caltrain Depot, which is located, you'll see that it's very close in proximity to Wheeler Plaza. And Walnut Street is located here. Now Wheeler Plaza historically has been this, this parking lot that's used by the public and for patrons of the downtown. Here's a closer look at the Wheeler Plaza location. The property that we've assembled is about 2.3 acres, and the city has assembled the property over the year. And when I say assembly, I mean, we have purchased property through the redevelopment agency. The last purchase was the Foodville site, which is located here. The property before that, what we call the furniture site at 1245. And then these are small retail commercial buildings here, and then an apartment building located here. So the city has assembled these parcels over the year to make this project work. I thought that I would include a slide showing the surrounding buildings and streets to give you a feeling of the scale and the massing of the buildings in the area. And of note is that some of the buildings are three or four stories in height. This is located on Cherry Street. As you can see, in contrast to the downtown Laurel Street, where you have one and two-story buildings, San Trans Building across the street, and then Pacific Casa Enda, which is four stories across the street from there. And this is the location at San Carlos Avenue and Walnut Street. So why a Wheeler Plaza project in the first place? And I'm just going to give you a brief history. Well, ideas for the Wheeler Plaza project have been around, I think, since the late 90s is the first time I saw it. And it came out of a citizens advisory committee that was looking at downtown parking. It was mentioned in that, in that report. They said, well, we should at least look at mixed-use development at the Wheeler Plaza site. The city began then acquiring properties in anticipation of a future development. The most recent economic development plan noted in 2007 that Wheeler Plaza is one of the top five economic development objectives in the city of San Carlos. In 2009, we had a community meeting to get feedback, and this is well before we even put pen to paper. There were no designs at that time. We went to the community and basically talked about the idea and solicited comments, and the developer did interviews with the retail merchants in the area and a lot of other people in the community. Again, we made further acquisitions that I mentioned there, and we had our latest, a pretty well-attended community meeting back in May. And we've posted the comments that we had in May on our city website. So why do cities support downtown mixed-use development in the first place? And I think the answer is, is that what we've seen over the past decades is that people's personal preferences have changed in terms of their lifestyle options and what people want. And downtown mixed-use development projects contain, just as I said, a mix of projects. You'll have retail, commercial on the ground floor, restaurants. Above that, you may have offices or condominiums or apartments. And what our research shows is that the San Mateo County homebuyer, and in particular, the San Carlos population's profile and lifestyle has changed over the last decade. These developments attract people who want a more urban lifestyle and also people who are seeking an alternative to the, a more affordable alternative than the single-family house. They want to, perhaps, they live in the hills, their kids are gone, they want to be down where the action is. And then you'll have the young professional that wants to walk to the train, not have a car, go to San Francisco or San Jose, invite his friends to downtown for the weekend. So again, why the Wheeler Plaza project? We have a gem of the downtown that is very traditional in its character and its form. Many view the downtown as the cultural and social heart of our community, and I think we don't and shouldn't take, change lightly in San Carlos. On the other hand, this may be an opportunity to add vibrancy to the downtown and vitality for our local economy. This can be viewed as a unique catalyst opportunity, continuing the success and resiliency of our downtown. So through mixed-use development, there's a potential to add new vibrancy by adding a built-in clientele, adding people within walking distance to the restaurants and the retail goods and the grocery store that we have. The intent is then to offer this vibrancy to the benefit of the retailers and to add this customer base to the downtown. The plaza, in terms of the development program, again, we've assembled about 2.39 acres, including the parking lot there. It's a 108 units, a mix of unit types and sizes. Eight of them would be below-market rate houses. There would be approximately 98, 99 hundred square feet on San Carlos Avenue. That would be Class A retail space. For the Foodville site, it would be a two-story development. I show 8,000 square feet there, but it would actually be a floor plate of about 4,000 square feet on the ground floor, a restaurant with potentially another 4,000 square feet of office or a restaurant above. There would be room for a public plaza, a very important amenity and component of this project. It would be about the same size as the Laurel Street Park, perhaps a little bigger. We would have a total of 427 parking spaces. As I noted, there's 187 parking spaces in the parking lot there. This would be a 20%, 7% increase in what we have for public parking, so an additional 50 parking spaces. Confirmed story general plan in terms of the density and also the height limit and what uses are allowed. So let's walk through the site plan. This is one of the things that we're asking you to look at tonight. And so we'll start underground, and a lot of people want to know, well, how does the parking work and where do the residents park, where will we park? This is the basement level, so this would be below grade. As you can see, it's a rectangular garage area that would incorporate the retail businesses that we purchased here and the apartment building that used to be here. And there would be about 190 plus or minus spaces on the ground floor there, underground, rather, and they would be accessed on Walnut Street, so the residents would drive down underneath. This is the ground level. This is where it interfaces with the streets, and it's the same grade. And on the street level, we would have then our first level of public parking, about 117 stalls, be, again, at the same grade as all the businesses, so you could walk in and out. You could go through from Laurel Street, walk right into the parking garage, or from any of these businesses and walk right in, drive right in to the parking garage. This yellow area represents that 9,800 square feet of Class A retail space located here at the corner of San Carlos Avenue and Walnut Street. The project would also incorporate a small visiting plaza here with a water feature where, that would be open to the public on this side. And the service area would be, would be through here, through Cherry Street, and you would drive through, and the trucks would then access to the right. You couldn't enter on San Carlos Avenue, but you could exit here, and that would be able to still service all these retail businesses that are located here. Sister City Alley is located along this side of the building, and that would remain. So that's about the size of Sister City Alley, but it would be widened, again, to incorporate the vehicles that would use this. One of the other important things in developing this is we thought that it would be important to maintain this pedestrian paseo that is sort of an informal paseo that's people use now. Most people walk through the parking lot, but you would maintain then this area that also the city required of the Pacific Plaza or development, Pacific Casa Enda development across the way. So you can walk from City Hall Park, walk through Pacific Casa Enda, then we would maintain this, so you could walk all the way to downtown or all the way to the train station and vice versa. The Foodville site located here. The Foodville site located here, we'll talk about later in more detail. And then there would be improvements on Walnut Street, undergrounding of utilities, new street trees in this area. Then we're moving up a level to the second floor. And so what you see at this level is a second floor of public parking. This would all be accessible to the public. The second floor here of the retail is actually open ceiling. It's a 20-foot-high ceiling because modern-day market economics suggests that you need a real high ceiling for Class A retail. This is the first residential level. And so you see there's a mix of units here. And what you'll see on the Walnut Street side is these big plazas that would be private plazas available to the residents of the development. However, what this does is it provides a great deal of openness and variation in the facade treatment, so you don't have as much massing on the front at Walnut Street. You can see that the houses have been joined here in these locations here. You would get the housing right along the San Carlos Avenue frontage. Moving up to Level Two of the residential, same thing, stacked. And then Level Three is different than what we've seen before. And this is, again, a change that was made as a result of the things that we heard at the May 4th community meeting and also for other feedback that we've heard from the city council and others. One of the key issues is people were concerned about the elevation along San Carlos Avenue. People were concerned about the massing here and that, you know, not be too high of a building and not create shadowing effects on San Carlos Avenue. So city staff and the developer worked with the architect to look at, how can we reduce massing on the San Carlos Avenue elevation? And the solution that we're looking at at this time is to remove a floor of units right here. So this whole floor would be eliminated, and it would be reduced by 10 feet. So it goes from a 50-foot-high building to a 40-foot-high building, significant reduction in height on both sides of Walnut Street. Now, what happens to these units? These units are needed to make the economics of this project work. So what we've done is moved these units to these locations here. So we've stacked the units here and here. And these units have been, are the same, but they've been moved back to give even more variation and articulation on the Walnut Street elevation. So that's where those units went. You still get that openness. You still see the open plazas here. Now, I wanted to show you the difference between this and what was there before. So this is what you saw before. You saw these units on the top floor, the fifth level. We didn't have these units located here. And this is what we are showing you this evening. So there's the change. Again, you see these two units. They're actually stacked, several units there, but they're set back, just as these units are as well. Some of the public comments that we've heard to date include construction noise, parking, traffic circulation, heights and views, and again, the need for an amenity. Now let's talk just a little bit about the public plaza. This is a KMA. We've heard this all along through the development of this concept. The city purchased the Foodville building, which is about this in the outline, it's eight or 9,000 square feet. The idea is for this building to be demolished. This part, this area would be used for valet parking for the downtown during the construction of this project, to relieve the downtown pressure for the merchants. And we would park those vehicles elsewhere, so you could just drive in, get the valet, and go shopping. Once this is constructed, we would then be able to construct a new retail footprint here. Again, 4,000 square feet, first floor, 4,000, second. And then we would have the new open plaza located here. The idea is to have a visiting place for users of all kinds, employees, the lunch crowd, concerts, performances, events, a place to meet neighbors, connection to the Caltrain Depot and other transportation, creating a gateway destination, I think. And a restaurant would stimulate activity on the ground floor throughout the day. So the concept would be to have glass all along this side of the building, so that would be, it would just be a transition between the indoors and the outdoors. You'd be kind of moving in and out. And so this would be perhaps incubator downtown office, incubator space that we've heard a lot about, had a lot of desire for in our downtown that we don't have, or second-floor office. I'm going to just talk a little bit about the concept of an advisory committee. We are recommending that the council appoint an advisory committee to study the Laurel Plaza. It would be overseen by the council subcommittee, and we have recommended a number of commissions in the chamber. We've developed some draft design guidelines to just start to set the stage for what the community values are for the plaza. And we are also asking to issue an RFP for a development of the Wheeler Plaza, separate development and design team. This is a very unique opportunity. We think that going out to the marketplace offers the most options and alternatives to the city council and the rest of the community. So if we go out, we hope to get lots of different ideas and see what's out in the marketplace, as opposed to trying to do it with one of our own design teams that we develop. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Frank Spabasek.
Good evening. Our role in this has been twofold. One is to look at the continuing market trends to see how this proposal might fit into what we're seeing in terms of demand for housing, demand for retail space here in this section of the peninsula. And then, second, to look at the economics of this and to validate on an ongoing basis the amount of public investment that's needed into this endeavor in order to make it move forward. In terms of looking at activities relating to the market support, we are seeing growth again in the San Mateo County jobs in terms of a falling unemployment rate that is being generated by the growth in the high-tech technology sector, in terms of venture capitals coming into economy here. And as such, it's causing more hiring to take place. In addition, we're seeing a recovery in the housing market in terms of, get rid of that thing. Is there any suggestion here?
Yeah.
Thank you. In terms of, oops. There we go. In terms of the home prices are starting to again go up here in San Mateo County and San Carlos as well, as well as looking at a local opportunity here in 1001 Laurel, where we're seeing that the inventory is 70% sold and the average reduction from the release price is only 2%. Again, this is something that we would continue to be looking at as it goes through this process, because one aspect of this proposal would be to incorporate a profit-sharing program in the disposition and development agreement wherein the redevelopment agency would share in future profits. In looking at what the funding requirement is, again, as Mr. Spabay had indicated, the city and agency has purchased properties to date at 1245 San Carlos, as well as the former Foodville site, to the total of $5 million. In addition, there is a, at this point, a requirement for roughly $1.8 million of direct financial investment that would go towards paying building permit fees and other municipal fees, and then the cost to relocate residential residents on Walnut, as well as commercial residents or tenants on San Carlos Avenue. So we're looking at a direct investment from the agency's non-housing fund of roughly $7.1 million. In addition, back in the early 2000s, the agency bought the properties there on Walnut and San Carlos Avenue using funds from the Housing Set aside Fund. That's roughly $1.7 million, and that would be translated into eight BMR units on the site. And then finally, the city would be transferring the property that currently serves as the Wheeler Plaza parking lot to the developer for construction of the parking garage and the platform for the residential units. And then that property would be transferred back to the city when the certificate of occupancy for the parking structure is provided and before the residential units would be constructed. In looking at the financial returns that would be generated, we looked at both future dollars and then the present value of those future dollars as if we had that money today. And that translates into these various returns over this timeframe. And that's a combination of sales tax revenue, property tax increment revenue, building permit fee revenue, other municipal or license fees and that, as well as then the developer profit sharing that we mentioned earlier. In looking then at our revenues versus expenditures, we see over the 20-year period, and because this includes residential units, and because this property is one that would stand the test of time in terms of generating revenues to this city and agency for this period, we look at a 20-year window. We see in current dollars, being the net present value amount, of generating roughly $3.6 million. There'll be ongoing service costs associated with the parking structure and with service costs for the residence and the commercial of $1.1 million. That brings a general fund impact of a net $2.4 million in $2,011 over this 20-period. In addition, we would get another $5.4 million of property tax increment revenue to the redevelopment agency. That gives a total net income of $7.8 million, minus the direct investment of $7.1 million, to give a 3/4 of a million dollars net return on this investment. In addition, we would be getting a parking structure valued at $6.5 million, the public plaza, funding into the city's BMR ordinance funds that would then be used for additional affordable housing, as well as the eight below-market rate units on-site. Also, then, there are the non-financial community benefits in terms of the public plaza, the new building and the new commercial space here in downtown San Carlos, moving forward with a development that would be a LEED Silver development that would be also transit-oriented, as well as then the parking returns that would be generated, as well as new residents and new jobs. To close, Al will come back and talk about the next steps.
And in terms of next steps, as I mentioned at the very beginning of the presentation, it's a work in progress. We're progressing along. We would continue with community outreach as we make changes to the development, solicit feedback, prepare requests for proposals for the design. And this is all before we get into the public hearing process toward the end. So the staff recommendation is to adopt the resolutions of the council and agency to accept that preliminary site plan and term sheet, to authorize preparation of a development and disposition agreement, authorize preparation of the environmental impact report, which is perhaps one of the most complex and long parts of the process, authorize formation of this Laurel advisory, Laurel Plaza Advisory Committee, and again, let the release of the RFP for the design and development of the Foodville site project. And that concludes the staff presentation. And we're all here to answer questions of the mayor and city council.
Okay. So like before, we'll start with questions. We'll do public comment, and then we will discuss. So Mr. Lewis, would you like to start with some questions?
Sure, sure. I have, mostly have to do with the term sheet. So it's, I think, attachment seven. Let me find it here. Right.
Yeah, attachment seven.
So on, let me see, on page two. So, excuse me, on page three, it talks about, one of the items is consider certification at LEED Silver standard. In certain cases, we're using language in the term sheet that is sort of definitive, and then at other times, we have sort of equivocal language. I thought that our goals from the very beginning on this project were that they would be LEED and Silver certified, and also we just put that out as potential community benefit. So it seems to me as a team, as a term sheet, it'd be better to have it to be projected at LEED Silver certification standard. If we decide for whatever reason that needs to be augmented or changed or whatever, we could do that. But rather than sort of be equivocal on that, I would just say that it was something I think that we hadn't intended from the beginning. I thought there's momentum behind that, so I'd love to see that maybe put into it. So that's one question, whether or not we could change that language. There's another thing that I don't necessarily see in the term sheet. And I know, you know, I've read about other private and public projects that have construction-completion incentives, and I don't, I didn't see any language in here about that. But I do think that in big projects like this, and certainly at the term sheet stage, that it'd be wise to consider completion, construction incentives of some sort, both that can work to the financial benefit of both folks doing the work as well as the city, and also give us some assurances, like for instance, if we do get behind schedule and there's certain relocation fees that we, for different tenants, that we've incurred, how are we going to help recover those costs if it goes over, if there's problems or whatever? So there's that. And then just being a, you know, 30-year project manager in my business, I always would love to start to see in the term sheet, proposed schedule across the board for a lot of these different elements, and also correspondingly, a schedule for expended funds. And again, at the term sheet stage, for me, those things are, those are all important, so we all sort of know what to expect and when the money's going to be spent and how it's going to be spent as part of those terms. So I guess there's as much comments as questions, but I'm wondering whether or not we could try to incorporate some of those things.
Mr. Spabay, are we able to place those into the term sheet, or is this going to be an issue?
Yeah, I think that we're looking for your guidance this evening, and this is the time to make changes to the term sheet. And so that's what we're looking for. I think that on some of these, I would ask the developer, if the developer has any significant concerns, that he addresses those this evening with those issues that were brought up by Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. I'm John McMorro. You know, as to the LEED Silver, that's fine. What we're finding is that that's kind of a static standard. And the industry, the energy industry, is really moving rapidly. So I guess what I would ask is LEED standard or the equivalent, because there are things that are being devised today that haven't been incorporated by LEED Silver that we would like to use. So it's really an industry that is moving faster than the standard.
That's fantastic. I think the only thing, we want to make sure that there's language in here that shows that we may not accept substandard to the LEED. If it's different than or better than, that's good stuff.
So we give the staff the ability to evaluate.
Sure. I mean, from my standpoint, that's, it's achieving the goal.
And then in our construction contracts, we do have incentives, and we can talk, we can work something into the term sheet. But we do, as part of our contract with our contractor, have incentives for finishing early. So we, I don't mind when we can work.
That'd be great, and I'd love for us just to do analysis of the way some of these other projects have been done, the way maybe you've done in the past, but also some other public agencies have been pretty successful at sort of accelerating these projects and making it work for everybody.
Right. And we can define the schedule.
These are always so, a project like this, right in the heart of downtown, is going to, you know, it's going to be just imperative that it stays on a schedule and we sort of feels that progress, so we get back to patterns that are good for everybody.
Right. And actually, the key to that is just before we break ground, we spend forever on the drawings so we don't get into the, into the project and have any delays because there's any uncertainty. So it's all the work beforehand that's really most important.
Great. And are you comfortable with also putting some scheduling language?
That's fine. I think we can do that.
Great. Those are my primary comments. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Royce and I are on the subcommittee for this, so we've gone over a lot of these items, so right now I don't have any questions at all.
Sounds great. Mr. Royce?
I'm on the subcommittee, and I got a couple, a couple actually items I just thought about going, reviewing in the last few days. Mr. Spabay, I noticed on the scheduling, of course, we're doing the parking structure first, which makes a lot of sense. It looks like, of course, this could change, but more of a September 2012, taking us through winter. Is there issues? I know we have some ordinance on moving dirt and digging big holes in winter, but will that work?
It's possible. I'm going to ask the developer, he has more experience with regard to construction activity. So you want to address that?
I know we're down about one level. We're close to water level there.
Right. And you're right, and this is a schedule that, you know, we're striving to achieve. Once we dig the hole and begin the concrete work, the weather isn't a factor. So when we are digging and there's an exposed hole, you know, it may So when we are digging and there's an exposed hole, you know, it may be if there's rains that we'll have to do some pumping of the water.
Okay, well, we'll have to get a special permit as, because our ordinance does not allow construction, and we'll have to work through that with the city on that.
Right. I think once we get down to an exact schedule on here, is where we're going to start, we're going to have to mesh that with weather and.
And a second, my last question I have, it's kind of a soft question, I'm not sure, but I think it's important to think a little bit about it. So retail availability, how will the, this, because of location and design and size, attract a different type of retail to Laurel? And I call it still our downtown, because it is downtown. And, you know, is that, what kind of opportunities are there? And of course, behind my thinking is always 1001 Laurel, even though it's 70% filled, the bottom retail is vacant still. So again, how does this differ and what opportunities, and does it change kind of the climate of our downtown because of the type of the retail?
Well.
Pretty complicated question, but do you?
The dynamic, no, it's a great question, and it's certainly something we look at, because not all mixed-use projects are successful. And we typically shy away from a mixed-use project if the retail component doesn't make sense. In this case, it does. The dynamics between where this is located in, say Laurel, are completely different. The pedestrian traffic is really what is going to be driving the retail component, and the pedestrian traffic along Laurel is fantastic. And our housing component is just going to be adding to that. So we think there's going to be tremendous demand for the retail space along San Carlos. It both has pedestrian, it has vehicular traffic along San Carlos, has great visibility. So it really has all the components to be a highly desirable retail location. But having said that, what we plan to do is really start early in the process, attracting retailers, sifting through those retailers to make sure we have retailers that fit with the existing retail base and add to it. We certainly don't want to compete with anybody that's currently in business. Kind of our main goal in this project from the outset is to make sure we don't do anything but add to the Laurel Street character. So that's what we intend to do with the retail as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Royce. Mr. Grokot?
So I have a, yeah, a number of questions here. I first wanted to focus on the tenant relocation, numbers of $292,000. And so here's my concern, is I'm just doing a count through, there's a dry cleaner, there's a hair salon, there's a locksmith, there's a coffee shop, there's a liquor store, that's five commercial. And then you mentioned, I didn't realize, it talks in here about the residence, the tenants at 657 Walnut. Can you break that number down for me a little bit, the 292?
The roughly $200,000 of that is related to the commercial relocation, and $92,000 is related to the residential relocation. We're working on a relocation plan, because we have interviewed all of the tenants in both of those properties. And in the residential side, the effort will be made to find them housing opportunities and other affordable developments. On residential relocation, the agency's obligation is to pay the rent differential between current rent and market rent if they were to relocate into a market rent structured development. In this case.
For how long?
For 42 months.
Three years.
Plus moving expenses.
That's okay. Plus moving expenses and PG&E hookup and all those kinds of things?
Yes.
Right. Okay.
And then in the commercial relocation, the obligation is to find them a new opportunity, and then to pay the actual cost of moving them, to reestablish them, to pay for any special equipment needs and the like. And so this is a preliminary estimate based upon our initial interviews, and then the relocation plan would get into more detailed costs and actions that this agency would take if it elected to relocate those people because the project proceeded forward.
So if, let's say for instance, all five of these businesses took you up on their, on the relocation process, is there enough in the $200,000 to do that? Or, I guess a better question is, if the $200,000 comes up short, what happens?
If the $200,000 comes short, then the agency would be looking to provide additional funds for those relocation needs.
Repeat that, please?
If it came up short, then it's the agency's obligation to provide additional funds for the relocation needs.
The RDA?
Yes.
It's the obligation to do that?
Yes.
There's no question about it. I see the city attorney moving forward.
Well, I, there's, there's one issue that, and I don't have them in front of me, but some of the recent purchases may have changed that equation, so the city may, the RDA may not have an obligation in some of the leases, for instance, that we've entered into for the, some of the properties, because as part of our acquisition, that was part of the transaction.
So acquisition?
So I'm talking about some of the buildings on San Carlos Avenue. We acquired them, and then the leases we've entered into include a waiver of some of those rights.
Can you, are you free to speak then about the dry cleaners, the salon, the locksmith, the coffee shop, and the liquor store?
Those are included in the leases that the city has approved, and unfortunately, I don't have those in front of me, but I know that those provisions are included in those leases.
That provision to pay for relocation?
That it's waived.
It's waived?
It's waived.
All right, I'm going to hold on for one second, Mr. Garcia.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to extend this meeting to 11 o'clock, please.
Second. Second.
Okay. Anyone opposed? All right, with that, we'll just keep going.
I'm trying to follow. So it's waived, so we have no obligation to those five businesses to help them relocate their businesses?
The tenants signed those waivers because they received below-market rents for a period of years. In some of the discussions that occurred with the city council as we were going through the budget, the city council at that point indicated that they would like to provide relocation benefits for those tenants. So this budget includes a preliminary cut of what those relocation costs would be.
We're going back and forth here, I'm sorry. The dry cleaner, the salon, the locksmith, the coffee shop, the liquor store, do they have rights to moving expenses or not? Yes or no?
They don't have ri, Mr. Grokot, they don't have rights, but I think the council has indicated that we would like to work with them to give them some benefits, okay?
Okay.
So that's, that's the point of why I think Mr. Spizak should put these amounts into the budget, because we said we want to try to help these people, you know, legally, we may not have to, but we want to try to help them.
Correct. I was. And I, listen, I just want to speak from a personal level. My dad was a small business owner, and he went through something like this, and it wasn't any fun. I watched it as a, you know, 10-year-old kid. So I don't want to see us hurt any small businesses. We're moving and shaking here as a big 2.3-acre property owner, and these are small businesses. Some of these people, like, for instance, you know, I'll just be straight up with you. The dry cleaners, this suit goes to that dry cleaner? And I've spoken to these people, this is their retirement, their business, and if they don't have a business to sell at the end of the line, they have no retirement. And I for one don't want to do that to anybody.
Mr. Grokot, we're in question time, sir.
I know, I know we're in question time, but that's, that's where I'm driving with my question.
And Councilmember Grokot, I was just bringing it up because you brought up the comment of what would happen if the funds were short, and there's a legal reason why we might not run short, but it's a policy decision that you have as far as how much funding you would like to allocate for that. It is a matter of right versus your desire and policy.
Sorry, Mr. Rubens, we need to have that discussion.
Yeah, and we'll have that during discussion.
The question maybe, can we have a breakout of those relocation funds and make sure that we feel like we're doing the appropriate thing by those business owners? That's sort of what you're getting at, right?
That's what I'm getting at, Mr. Lewis, exactly. Very good. Okay. I also had a question about, for businesses that aren't these, that aren't tenants to us currently. So we'd be speaking more about the rest of the businesses along San Carlos Avenue, the ones on Laurel Street, and the other, there's a business or two, I think, on Cherry. Cherry Street. Well, there might be some impact to businesses also on Walnut as well. But my concern is, during construction, yes, we do, you know, we try to make do with a parking, valet parking situation, but what if these businesses see a drop in their revenues, their drop in their business? Because, and my concern quite frankly, counsel, is that when we did Laurel Street improvements, which is a benefit to the city, but I know of three businesses that went out of business during the construction process and never came back. And again, that affects people's lives and their livelihood and so forth, and, you know, I just don't want us to be responsible.
Mr. Grokot, is there a question?
Yeah, there is a question. Do we have anything in this for loss of revenue to businesses on these other locations?
No, we do not.
Okay, is, and we could, I guess we could discuss that or come up with something on that? Are there, to your knowledge, are there insurance policies maybe we could take out or something that we could?
To my knowledge, there are no insurance policies. And again, as with the relocation, it would be a policy decision of the city council.
Okay, so we'll take that up during comments and discussion. Any other questions?
Yeah, just a couple more. The parking situation that you mentioned, the valet parking, questions, how long would that have to go on? Or, put it a different way, how soon would regular parking during this process be available to the businesses that rely on it?
We're going to need you to come to the podium.
To the mic.
We're expecting the garage component to be six to eight months.
Six to eight months. So, so once that's done, then it could be used, even though there might be construction going on around it?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Six to eight months. Okay. And then the last question, it has to do with what it says here under the item title, acceptance of preliminary site plan. And I'd like to know what, what site plan I'm, we would be accepting. Is there a description of that, or?
The site plan would be basically the building blocks that were presented here in the PowerPoint of how the site would be used. Then that needs further refinement through the next step of this process.
That was my question. I've got a comment on that when we get to it.
Sounds great. Are those all your questions?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Royce. We already, we were on team, sorry. Okay, Mr. Seve, I have a question.
Most of mine have been taken. But I have a question about our, we're going to get a $3.1 million below-market-rate housing fee to the city, correct?
That's correct.
You and I talked a year and a half ago when I got on about our housing fund that was growing, and we talked about the possibility of the council, one of these projects coming along, doing a separate project for, say, senior affordable housing or stuff. Is that going to be coming forward at some point due to these funds, or is it going to be part of this project? Is it going to be, at some point, we're going to talk about what we do with the money?
Yes, and, yes, you would be, and we're working on that project. We're actually, we're talking to some property owners. We have a relationship with one property owner on Cherry Street, and we're working with another property owner to assemble more property for a senior affordable housing project.
Okay, so that would just.
Coming forward at a later time when we have assembled those assets.
Okay, that's great. That was my only question. So we will go to public comment. We have a couple speaker slips. We'll be, so we have Tim Hillborne, then Sam Hertzberg, and then Elizabeth Las, I'm always bad at this one, Lasensky. Got it. All right.
You get one more.
Oh, and we'll have Bonnie McClure after that. So, Tim?
Hi, I'd like to thank the council for seeing us and hearing us on this topic. First of all, I'd like to commend the council in appointing Mr. Lewis back, and we really appreciate your thoughtfulness in that and the untimely passing of Omar. Basically, I'm here representing both myself as a community member from 1052 San Carlos Avenue, or 1052 Sylvan Avenue, and also a member of the Greater East San Carlos Board in supporting this recommendation to move forward with these plans for Wheeler Plaza. Wheeler Plaza can become a model for the city as a transit-oriented development. One of the things that stands out to me is the fact that this is in an area where the land use is appropriate. It being the height that it is and the density that it is, it fits in well with the surrounding buildings, unlike another development that's proposed along the railroad tracks. Also, I would like you to look at the fact that the pedestrian area that runs parallel with San Carlos Avenue, that's on the inside that Mr. Seve was talking about, possibly be utilized also for bicycles as well. As a bicyclist myself, I find writing down San Carlos Avenue, trying to get home, to be quite a scary aspect, so that would be nice to see. Also, in addressing Mr. Grokot's concerns about small businesses, I would really like to see the developer get involved in helping compensate any businesses that may be misplaced or in jeopardy of going under because of this. I think that the developer can step up and should step up to help out with that, so I think that would be a great thing. But overall, I just want to say for myself and as a member of the Greater East San Carlos Board, I am in very much support of this development going in. It's in a proper location, and the last thing I'd like to say is that you look at this as a model and as a land use model in comparison to when we start looking at the San Carlos Transit Village as well. So good job with this, and thanks for hearing us out on that.
Thank you, Mr. Hillborne. Okay, next up, we have Sam Hertzberg.
I'm also a member of the Greater East San Carlos Board, and the city did ask that we chime in on this development, and I echo Tim's comments that we think this is a model site for a transit-oriented development where it matches the scale, the height, the mixed use, proximity to the train station, to the downtown, and meets the residential needs as well as the shopping needs. You have a lot of parking in there, which I was impressed to see quite as much in addition to everything else. When we're, we have offered comments to the city about the Transit Village and about the height and the bulk and the issues. It's not about El Camino, it's about the rear end of the buildings close to the train tracks, which is what we see. And if the train should increase from 100 to 400 with another set of parallel trails, tracks, those are all issues of concern in terms of compatibility with other land uses, especially with the grade differential. So anyhow, this development, it really looks like a terrific development, and commend you for your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hertzberg.
I do have to leave early, but I also wanted to thank you very much for all the Laurel Park improvements. We really appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. Elizabeth Lasensky, and then Bonnie McClure.
Good evening, council. I'm the former Menlo Park Housing Commissioner, and I commend you for bringing forward this project. I seriously want to bring to your attention the issue of affordable housing, especially affordable senior housing. There is really a major crisis in housing in this community as well as on the Peninsula. People can't afford to live here. So whatever you can do to provide affordable housing, especially senior housing, is really appreciated. I'm impressed that you're even going there. But this is a project that is so perfect for affordable senior housing in that it would keep seniors very active, well into their later lives, and provide housing that they know how much their housing costs will be every month, whereas now on the open market, rents are skyrocketing, and seniors just can't possibly budget for this. And also, by providing affordable housing, you give them extra money to spend in our local economy. So there are many reasons to go with affordable housing. I encourage you to provide as much of it as possible. And also, I am completely supportive, as also on the board of Hometown Peninsula, whatever you can do to help our small businesses to make it through this time. This is going to be a very difficult time for them to, so. So, and it will not just impact the people who have businesses on San Carlos or Walnut, it will affect a lot of the other little businesses on Laurel Street. So whatever you can do to help them would be appreciated. Thank you very much, and thank you for your foresight.
Thank you. Last up is Bonnie McClure.
Bonnie McClure, San Carlos. As a member of Sustainable Land Use Committee of CIR Club, we like to see transit-oriented development. We see a lot of places that this project could be improved, and we will be anxious to do the scoping and participate in the EIR. It's wonderful to see you go ahead with this because you need to start right in getting the housing. Transit very tends to wait because of the railroad not knowing what they're going to do or how, you know, how the funding's going or anything on that. But we need people downtown so that they will be using the train, so the funding can go to the train. So it's sort of a build on one thing, you get something else. So I would like to see, though, the point that Brad brought up about lead silver, I would like to see the wording, a minimum of lead silver or equivalent, because lead gold would be better.
Thank you, Bonnie. Is there any other public comments? All right, seeing none, we are going to get into our discussion. Would you like to start, Mr. Grocott, or Mr. Lewis? Either of you?
Well, I'll just dive on on the, considering Mr. Grocott's point, they were saying about the small businesses there. I think there's probably, all of us share that concern. And I guess one of the, I don't know if part of the process would just be getting together those business owners in that area, making sure they're familiar with, here's what the construction plan is, here's what we think the impact's going to be on the street, on the sidewalk, on the parking, so they really get it, and they can actually put out what some of their needs are. I mean, the one thing is relocation dollars, but on the other hand, the adjacent businesses, you know, I don't know, maybe for the restaurants, we put valet parking in another area for them that's as convenient, you know, the same trans building, there's parking behind that, maybe that's an adjunct where we can sort of, you know, push traffic, or, all I'm saying is maybe look at the actual impact that we start to project and have them come in and say, here's what we'd like, and make some proposals. Not necessarily financial, but just logistical proposals, and we can give them a good idea of when we think they're going to be, what it's going to do to foot traffic and all those different things. Because it's those impacts that can put them out for six months, and then what happens?
So if I may follow up on that, is a discussion I am, there's, there's a proposal in here for a committee of some kind.
For Laurel Street Plaza.
Laurel Street Plaza.
For the Laurel Street Plaza. Well, what I'm thinking of is with what Mr. Lewis talked about is perhaps, perhaps we can't do something necessarily, if they see a drop in business, it might be hard to monitor, it might be hard to know, are we the cause of it or not, or is it the economy or whatever? But one thing that perhaps we could do is have, even if it's somebody we have to hire on a part-time basis during this construction, or the developer helps us with that cost, is an ambassador assigned to these businesses to, someone that they can go to that, to talk about any problems they may be having during the construction. That was a big thing with Laurel Street was, some of these businesses, they felt like there was no one they could really talk to. They would come to City Hall and try to talk to the Public Works Director, but, you know, that's difficult. He wasn't available for them or whatever. But having an ambassador that would speak for them, bring their issues to City Hall, help them out, and I think on, in addition to what you're talking about, we need to have some upfront meetings ahead of time. And I've talked to some of these businesses, part of the problem to the council is, is a lot of these people are, they're Korean, they're Vietnamese, they're, you know, they don't, they don't have a command of the English language, and so for them to understand what it is we're doing can be challenging.
Right.
And so we need to address that issue, the language issue, and just communicating with them.
So it could be, one potential solution is just to do business outreach, and we start by bringing, so we start to hear the concerns in advance. And also maybe part of what you're suggesting is after the project commences, things are different than you might have imagined, and then so we just plan it in. You know, two weeks in, we get the group back together, or we go out and reach out to each one of them and say, what do you think? What do we need to do different? And try to really actively manage that all the way through, and maybe allow for some of that, that time. Because the last thing in the world we want is to sort of, you know, the nice roots that we have of the community in that area to have those get in trouble during the course of the project.
I don't want to see that happen.
Yeah, okay, well, it sounds like we've got, somewhere I'm looking at staff is, you guys on board with that? Okay.
And just, I just want to reiterate one concern there, and that is the bilingual aspect of it. Because again, you have Korean, you've got Chinese, you've got Vietnamese, Hispanic, and so there's going to be occasion, and I know that's part of the problem because I've talked to these people, and even though I try to listen and so forth, there's a language barrier there.
And then the other thing, we haven't seen, and maybe this is just going to be part of the process, there haven't been that many Laurel Street views of what the project may look like, and I'm sure as the design process continues, we'll get more and more of that. But sometimes we see it from Walnut, and we see it from sort of San Carlos Avenue, and because Laurel Street's sort of the artery and the heart of this, it means I should start to see what is that impact. I know there's less space on the street, but just to sort of, you know, what do that look and feel like? What are we shooting for down there? Because that's, that's the primary view.
Okay. Mr. Lewis, is that all you got? Okay, Mr. Grocott, do you have any more?
Yeah, I do, but do we want to hear from others first, or?
Well, we can go with yours, and see, I mean, I know you had a much longer list, and then we'll go to everyone else.
Okay. One thing I'm wondering, and maybe we want to talk about this, I've, I've heard now two times, one from a guy who's in the business and then from this lady who last spoke, the idea of affordable senior housing. The fellow I talked to actually specializes in dementia care and Alzheimer's, and there is a huge demand for that. Even, you know, they were showing us slides about how the housing market is pretty strong for San Carlos and, you know, so forth. But I wonder if, do, might we want to consider a focus of senior housing for this location? And that would be another benefit to the community, something similar but different than the Elms. And actually, as it turned out, I think with Pacific Hacienda, if you went over there and did a survey, a good many people who bought into that project who happened to be senior people in our town who, or near our town, who sold their homes and moved into the Hacienda project. So might we want to have some discussion about that? Do we want to take that direction, or what might that mean to the developer if we did?
Yeah, it sounds like we'd need some staff consideration on that. Can we change the BMR units to just seniors? Or, I have a Mr. Seve, or actually, Mr. Sewicki, or Frank, if you want to come up here.
Or anybody.
Anybody.
To not get into the detail of the economics, one of the challenges we have here is we're looking to get a $6.5 million parking structure out of this transaction. What's driving the ability to do the $6.5 million public parking structure is the number of for-sale units at market rates that are included in this development. When we looked at the Performa, if we started dropping off for-sale units, less than the 100 that are there, then the amount of agency subsidy needs to increase rather dramatically. And so what the thought was, was instead of having this development that has the $6.5 million parking structure attached to it, be something that also has a larger number of affordable units, to look at a different standalone affordable development that we may be able to get anywhere from 25 to 30 affordable units in that, using tax credits, which brings in another outside source of revenue, that would make it a potential rental development affordable to very low, low and moderate income senior households. So initially, the thought was to look at more affordable units in this mix, but then with having a public plaza, with having a parking structure, there needed to be income to pay for that, and that income's derived from the market rate units themselves.
Quick question, if I may.
Sure.
Do you know, do you happen to know, like in Belmont, they have the sunrise that they put in on Sixth? Is that purchase or is that lease?
I believe that's lease.
Okay, so it's a different model, okay. The, the last comment I have, or item for discussion here is, the reason I asked about the site plan and approving it is, little prologue to this, I haven't said anything about this in closed session because we've been talking about different kinds of things, not the design of this project. I am not pleased with the site plan, and I'm, the thing I'm not pleased about is 6,200 square feet, same size as Laurel Street Park, as the public amenity. I said, and everyone knows this from the very beginning, that I have trouble with this project. I don't see it as being a benefit to the community. I see it as a benefit perhaps to the city, but not necessarily to the citizens. And so my point at that time was, I'll go along with this project if we have a community benefit. If there's no benefit to the community, I'm opposed. Right now, I see a postage stamp, and I'm not happy about it. I was looking for a gathering place, a living room or a family room for our community where we could have concerts, where we could do things, because right now, we have to trek over to the park to do a lot of things, and there's a lot of things that we've tried to do downtown where we close the street and so forth, and it's difficult. And I was really looking for a big gathering space. And I see, on the other hand, that there's big private plazas available to the residences, which is a nice amenity to give to those who are going to buy, but they're private. Those plazas to the residences is larger than what we're offering 28,000 people who live in this community. And so I'm looking for something bigger, and the only thing I can offer as a possible solution is I noticed we moved buildings off of the top of San Carlos Avenue, and maybe that is an opportunity for a rooftop plaza, which might be nice, where you could have some concerts. I don't know, but that's what I'm looking for. And I'll give you an example, the developer's here, he can listen to this. Delaware, California, has this, where they have a parking plaza, and on top of the parking plaza is a, is a beautiful, I don't know what, I guess a plaza is what you call it, with views of the ocean and so forth, and that's what they use it for. They use it as a big community living room. And that's the kind of thing I was hoping for when we started on this journey.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grocott, Mr. Gresselli.
Frank, could I ask you a question? We're tagging to Mr. Grocott's comment. For the Laurel Street Plaza section, we talked about a 4,000 square foot building and then of base, and then a 4,000 square foot on top. Any of those dollars involved in any of the numbers we saw there?
No.
No, okay, so if we wanted to change the Laurel Street Plaza to twice as big, we could do that.
Yes.
Okay, so just to let you know, it doesn't involve any of the dollars that were pointed up there. That's a completely separate thing, why we have to set up, and you'll have another bite of the apple even three times, because there's a subcommittee that's going to, we're going to get at. So, I mean, just to, to not allay your fears, but just to speak to them, speak to your comments, I just want to make sure everybody understood that that's completely separate. Somebody else is going to be building that building. This gentleman isn't going to be, as far as we know, isn't going to be building it. So it's, that's why we're going to go out for a design, for a, who's going to come in, there's, it's a blank palette to some extent. This is just one idea, and that's why the third item here is, as mentioned, is to go on RFP for development design. So, just to let you know.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gresselli. Do you have anything else, Mr. Gresselli?
No, I'm done.
Mr. Royce?
Sure, just, again, with Mr. Gresselli and I on the committee, we've been through a lot of this, I'm very pleased to see the changes of the setback on San Carlos Avenue. I've attended both of the community meetings from last year and this year, people have spoken. I think that's a good change. And then the second big change in one of the areas that is, one I'm passionate about, a little bit of that feeling that Mr. Grocott just kind of expressed, was the, what is owed to the citizens of San Carlos is a really nice community plaza that we're calling. And I'm clearly pleased to see that the process will be there, where the commissions, park and rec, and arts and culture, and planning will be involved, Mr. Gresselli and I will be involved, most importantly, the public will be involved. There are so many creative ways to, it's, it's, it's not only size, it can be size, but it's how well you do it. And it is meant to be a community meeting place. During the business day, moms with strollers can be there, but it can also fit 100, 150 people for music or community meeting, rooftop access, I think. I'm really excited to see what comes out. It doesn't affect the site plan here. Again, we could do lots of things to it, but that is the real success of this project for the city of San Carlos. So I'm kind of echoing some of your comments, but I think, I'm confident that that will happen. Also, just one really minor point, and I don't want to beat a dead horse here, you know, again, these businesses, like the five businesses on San Carlos Avenue, they've been paying really cheap rent for several years. They know they have no rights, or whatever you call it, that they're going to have to move. They know they're going to have to move. They've known us for a long time now, they know, they still got a couple of years before they're going to have to move. But council has approved $200,000 for relocation or for helping them, and we do need to look at, you know, a locksmith, you know, takes his boxes of locks and moves to a different store, where cleaners, you move, you may have a whole new code and technology of what cleaning equipment may be. It may be more complicated. And so I know that both Frank and Mr. Sewicki has, has met with his owners a couple of times, they've, they've discussed various options. We're really trying to work with, with these people. But the other part I want to bring up is interesting, is the other businesses, like businesses on Walnut, who are going to have to survive the eight months of building a parking structure. And an interesting concept will be, I do think maybe there is a way that we could help them financially, but I look at it a little bit more from a cash flow point of view, because two years later, there's going to be 100 and so many units of people and more foot traffic and more retail, and all of a sudden, year three and four, they're going to be doing better. So there may be a way to try to, maybe from a timing point of view, assist them during a tough time, but maybe with a sales tax measurement to say, yeah, but we want some of that back a little later on, because it is an issue with cycles, and a small business has troubles with cycles. We could help them with cycles, but let's not give, give away the whole ship on this thing. Comment?
Sort of a small business loan type thing.
Okay, Mr. Grocott, did you have something to add?
Well, I'm just, I'm just commenting on what Mr. Royce said. I suppose we could look at something that might be like a small business, low-interest loan that would get them through. Yeah, okay.
But paying, I like your point. Let's pay attention to them, let's talk to them, but let's be fair to them and us.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like we're all kind of coming to the same place, and I agree with most of the, pretty much all the comments that have been said, and I think staff has taken those pretty well, and I agree with the change in the deal points. So it sounds like we're all, we're all there. We all want to help the businesses, and we want to make sure that this is a great project. And we're going to get a lot of bites at this apple. This is going to continually be coming back, so this isn't our last time here. So if we can get some motions going on these resolutions, and my only concern, though, is, and we haven't spoken to this, on the Laurel Plaza Advisory Committee, you mentioned having commissioners and council members, are there going to be any public at-large? Well, I know there are going to be public meetings, but is anyone going to sit on the committee from the public at-large? Because I don't want to just keep going in the same well. We have a lot of talent in this community, and the more we can open things up.
We didn't put that in there. We, you know, there's one idea that the people you have on the commissions represent a broad range of views. So it was meant to represent that broad range of views. If you wanted to put somebody on from the broader community, we, you know, we would certainly do that. We would have to come up with some criteria for that. Perhaps we could put that together, so.
Well, I see Matt nodding out of the corner of my eye, so I don't.
We just went through a process for council, and we see the talent in this community all the time, and I agree with the mayor that we should not go back, to use your term, go back to the same well all the time. Let's, let's spread it around a little bit.
I definitely think we should tap into the resources we have, but then always open them up as well, and if you can get, you know, a business owner on Laurel Street to be able to chime in, and someone involved in Parks and Rec Foundation and all these other organizations, but figure out a criteria to have a couple at least at-large seats, because this is going to affect 28,000 people, and we shouldn't just go to the same 20 or so people that we always go to.
Okay. Okay, so can we have some motions then?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt-
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt for the city council, resolution number.
You have two resolutions, 201142 and RDA 189.
Okay. Resolution of the city council, the city of San Carlos, accepting preliminary site plans and transaction term sheet, and authorizing preparation of a disposition and development agreement, and environmental review document for redevelopment of certain real property. Wheeler Plaza, 1245 San Carlos Avenue, 1249-1265 San Carlos Avenue, 616 Laurel Street, and 657 Walnut Street. Do you want to take these separately, Mr. Rubens?
They should be taken separately.
That's my motion.
Do we have a second? Second. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
So, the second part, the city clerk has given us the RDA number, a resolution of the San Carlos Redevelopment Agency Board of Directors, accepting preliminary site plans and transaction term sheet, and authorizing preparation of a disposition and development agreement, environmental review document for redevelopment of certain real property. Wheeler Plaza, 1245 San Carlos Avenue, 1249-1265 San Carlos Avenue, 616 Laurel Street, and 657 Walnut Street.
Do you have a second?
Do we need to include in the motion the additions we talked about to the transaction term sheet tonight? Do we need to, as discussion amended, as per discussion, or something like that?
They didn't do it on the first one, so now, do I make that again?
I'm trying to, I'm not sure if that's in the city council reso.
I think it might just be in the RDA one.
Just in the RDA one? Why are they different? I don't know.
About the leads thing?
Unfortunately, they both do refer to the preparation of the DDA, which I think.
So, we're going to have to go back.
Okay, so we go back. I love talking. Okay, so, can we redo the first motion then, Mr.?
Yes, you can, this time.
Does he have to read the whole thing, or can he just add?
I'll read the whole thing. Let's start this again. City council, resolution number.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. It's a little late.
Forty-two.
Forty-two, a resolution of the city council, the city of San Carlos, accepting preliminary site plans and transaction term sheet, as changed and adjusted, amended, and authorizing preparation of a disposition and development agreement in the same situation, also adjusted, amended, et cetera, and environmental review document for redevelopment of certain real property. Wheeler Plaza, 1245 San Carlos Avenue, 1249-1265 San Carlos Avenue, 616 Laurel Street, and 657 Walnut Street. I second that. Do you want me to read it as well? No, thank you. Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, so, resolution number RDA.
One eighty-nine.
One eighty-nine, resolution of San Carlos Redevelopment Agency Board of Directors, accepting preliminary site plans and transaction term sheet, as adjusted and amended, and authorizing preparation of a disposition and development agreement, again, as amended and adjusted, and environmental review document for redevelopment of certain real property. Wheeler Plaza, 1245 San Carlos Avenue, 1249-1265 San Carlos Avenue, 616 Laurel Street, and 657 Walnut Street.
Second.
And, excuse me, there's another section that has the authorization of an expenditure of funds, just want to make sure that's clear, that's part of your, of your motion.
I'm reading.
Not in the title, but it's in the sections that you're approving on this one.
I'm done.
Okay, so we don't need to read that, though, we just need to make note of it? Mr. Rubens?
Exactly.
Okay, so noted. Madam Clerk?
Director Griselli?
Yes.
Director Grocott?
Yes.
Director Lewis?
Yes.
Director Roy?
Yes.
Chair Klein?
Yes. Okay, we need two more motions for staff recommendations, two and three. They're on the screen, if everyone's looking for them.
Authorize formation, make a motion authorize formation of Laurel Plaza Advisory Committee, which staff will work out membership of, I believe, is that correct, Mr. Moppy?
That's correct.
Does that work, Mr. Rubens?
Second by Mr. Grocott. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
And number three, authorize preparation and release, make a motion to authorize preparation and release of an RFP for development design teams for the building and plaza at the former Foodville site, Laurel Plaza.
Second that. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
All right, now we are on to 12B. Eleven o'clock. Oh, will someone make a motion to extend the meeting to 11:30? Although I pretty much did it, so, is there a second?
Second.
All right, is everyone favored?
No, and I would like to remind our colleagues that we have a closed session after this, right, Mr. Moppy?
That's correct.
Okay. Is anyone else opposed?
No.
All right, so noted, Mr. Griselli. We'll move on to 12BI. Consideration of authorizing the executive director to execute a professional services agreement for preparation of the environmental review document for the Wheeler Plaza redevelopment project with Lamphier Gregory.
Mayor and members of the city council, an RFP was released for a selection process for an environmental consultant for the Wheeler Plaza project. We received four proposals, we interviewed three firms, we had a selection committee that included members of community development staff and the developer. Staff recommendation is to utilize the company called Lamphier Gregory, which is based on their technical skill and abilities, and track record of success of previous projects, and the proposal, it is recommended that we move forward with a contract with Lamphier Gregory, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll open up for public comment. Seeing none, we'll go to discussion. Any discussion?
This is an RDA item, not.
Yes. Any discussion for the redevelopment agency board members? Seeing none, can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to execute professional services agreement for preparation environmental review document for Wheeler Plaza redevelopment project with Lamphier Gregory.
It's a resolution, so we're going to have to.
Sorry, resolution number?
One ninety.
Resolution, San Carlos Redevelopment Agency, approve the execution of an agreement for consulting services with Lamphier Gregory.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Director Griselli?
Yes.
Director Grocott?
Yes.
Director Lewis?
Yes.
Director Roy?
Yes.
Mayor, Chair Klein?
Yes.
Okay, now we will move to 12C. Consideration of options for the provision of truck service and the purchase of a Quint truck for the San Carlos Fire Department. Mr. Mora?
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. You recall that on our schedule to move ahead with the San Carlos Fire Department, this was the meeting to discuss the potential purchase of a used Quint truck as part of the hybrid fire proposal. As we continued to negotiate with Redwood City over the hybrid fire department proposal, and we're now, I'm pleased to say, nearing completion of that process, a couple of things came up. First of all, there was some concern on the part of both staff and Redwood City about the ability to acquire that truck and do the appropriate training between now and October 13th, or the start date of the new fire department. Also, in the process, we were able to have a further negotiations with Redwood City and reduce the cost of purchased truck service from 250,000 to 500,000 to 100,000. And at that point, staff thought it was appropriate to have TriData take another look at this question, and John Montanaro from TriData is in the audience tonight, if you have questions for John. You see both their original report and the updated report on this topic. TriData basically recommends that, or concurs with staff, that we move ahead in the first year and purchase the truck service from Redwood City for the sum of $100,000, and that we revisit the question of purchasing a Quint in the second year. They also recommend that we take a look at the light duty quick rescue vehicles in year two as well, given the preponderance of service calls in San Carlos and other agencies being primarily medical rather than fire suppression. So, staff wishes to run this revision by the council and get council's agreement that we make this slight change to move to purchase truck service in year one, and to revisit the question of Quint trucks and light duty vehicles in year two, to ensure a smooth ramp up of the initial new fire department.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mora. We will do questions, public comment, and then discussion. Are there any questions? Mr. Griselli, do you have anything?
No.
Mr. Royce? Mr. Grocott? No, Mr. Lewis?
Done, thank you.
Okay, I have no questions as well, so we will take public comment on item 12C. Mr. Randall, come on up. Wouldn't you like being back for these late nights, Mr. Lewis?
It's fantastic.
Okay, Mr. Randall, you have two minutes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, city council, Brian Randall, San Carlos. The light duty rescue vehicles, how many persons would be in those vehicles when they go to an emergency? Would it be two, or would it be three? I've been rescued by this fire department here one time, and because it was at night and I was unable to bend, rigid, it took three to four people to get me out of there on a stretcher, had to be tilted up and maneuvered round in corridor and out through the doors. You need three people, you need three people. Also, I still don't know if the first vehicle responding, which would be light duty rescue vehicle in cases, would there be a paramedic on board? Because there should be a paramedic on the first vehicle to arrive for a medical or whatever. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Randall, and Mr. Mora, would you like to answer those questions?
Sure. On a medical call, there would in fact be at least one paramedic on every medical call, and as far as the light duty vehicle, the current proposal is to have three member companies at each company, and the intent would be to send all three on such calls.
Okay. So now, we will open up for discussion. Does anyone wish to start? Seeing none, is there any discussion at all? Okay, can we have a motion then?
Is it that late?
No, no, it's just typically fire board members are.
Well, I didn't want to jump, do you want to go, Mr. Royce?
I'm making a motion that we make an agreement, Redwood City, amount of $100,000 contract truck services in one year, and explore the purchase of a Quint of the future.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis, any discussion? Nope, okay, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
All right, moving on to 12D. Consideration of adopting a resolution in the city council, authorizing the city manager to sign a contract with Miracle Play Systems in the amount of $326,125 to design and install playground equipment at Laurel Park. I'd like to thank all the public, I know you guys are here for this one, so sorry, it took so long to get there, but we'll get it done. Mr. Wallace?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Guy Wallace, Park Superintendent. As part of the fiscal year 2010, 2011 capital approval project budget, $333,000 was allocated for the renovation of the Laurel Park Playground and Laurel Building Restrooms. Laurel Park has two playground areas, one designed for five years old and under, and the other designed for children ages five to 12. The playground equipment is approximately 20 years old and has reached the end of its life. Some of the apparatus is out of compliance with standards established for playground safety. The equipment in the five and under play area is sparse, and there is a greater demand for more activity in this area of the playground. Initially, staff was considering a complete renovation for the five and under playground, also referred to as the tot lot, but through California Multiple Awards Schedules Program, also known as CMAS, the bid process afforded the city an opportunity to add additional features to the park's playground. As a result of this opportunity, staff organized a neighborhood meeting and invited residents of the greater east side to participate in a playground design discussion where park users could provide input on what they would like to see in their part of their park. The meeting was well received, and a follow-up meeting was scheduled to review the recommendations and to finalize the project proposal. One of the most significant outcomes of the neighborhood meeting was a desire to have a water feature at the park, specifically a splash pad similar to the one located in Burton Park. The park's footprint could accommodate a splash pad, and more importantly, the feature could be added and still be within budget. After consulting with the Department of Public Works, staff determined that the design of the splash pad provided a unique opportunity to provide surface water drainage for surrounding properties during inclement weather. Therefore, a subsequent project will be presented to council at the June 27th meeting that will essentially create a connection point to an existing storm drain. This project will be funded and coordinated by Public Works. It is estimated it costs around $30,000. Lastly, there will be sufficient funds remaining to provide cosmetic upgrades for the Laurel Building Restrooms. And I would like to invite David Yasu from Miracle Playground Designs to provide a brief overview of the playground design, after which David and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, David, I didn't catch your last name?
It's Yasu.
Yasu, we can make it as short as possible, I know you probably want to go home, too.
I'm going to close that up. I think I saw it on the desktop. I can do it. I'm assuming this is it here. Start slide, start, where's the start? There we go. All right, Miracle Play Systems, my name is David Yasu, very excited to present this to you today. We are a local design build firm for playgrounds. So, here you got the Laurel Park, what we are doing is the existing playgrounds, you got a two to five year old playground area here, you have your five to 12 year old playground area here, and the proposal is to rip those out and replace them with new structures. And then, we're proposing for the water feature to be located in this general area. So, this is a nice, quick picture of why this needs to be replaced. This is the two to five area, very dilapidated, so we're going to be pulling out all this rubber, all this sand. All the infrastructure will remain on the border here, concrete. Just adjacent to that is the five to 12 structure, again, very dilapidated, out of compliance structure. Some of the community input that was huge in this process were swings, shade, and water features. So, those things were all covered in our design. This is the two to five structure area, lot going on there, it's really kind of hard to describe this in a 3D rendering, you really have to imagine hundreds of kids running around playing on it, so, but you do have a high amount of shade implemented with the actual structure here, focusing only on that two to five year old age group, and then we really focused a lot on a nature play theme, so there's a lot of nature play going on within the design, and some benches and things like that. This surfacing is going to be a port in place rubber surfacing, if you've been to a park or playground recently, for example, Burton Park would have the same material for the surfacing. Here's the five to 12 age group area, extremely large structure, two stories, 10 foot tall slide, again, a lot of shade implemented into these designs, quite a bit more than what you have now, I can tell you that. Here's another view of that, we've designed a nice little river bed, going through the middle of it, which will be in rubber. This is a planned view of the water feature, so this is kind of hard to see what you're looking at there, I have a 3D next screen, which shows what the water feature will look like. So, you have a really nice, again, more to scale, you see the kids running around and playing, about 1,000 square feet, and provides a very, very nice feature for that particular area. That's my presentation in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you. We will do, any questions from the council? Mr. Royce?
Does the water, the water feature go down the drain, or can it be used for irrigation?
We're working with the city to reuse some of that water, to retain some of that water, and then I believe it will be going to storm.
Okay, Mr. Grocott?
I don't have any questions, the only comment I would have to staff is to, you know, we have the thing over at Burton Park, which is a great success, but it does have some downsides, and I think he's addressed, he seemed to address that with the sand mixture, with the rubber, and we have issues with that and some other things, so, maybe just taking a look at Burton Park, especially during high volume, high use, and design especially during high volume, high use, and, uh, design out some of the things that are problems over there at Burton.
Okay. Mr. Lewis?
Um, you know, Burton Park, we went out of our way to make sure it was disabled, uh, you know, available and accessible. Is, is this one same, similar standard?
Yes, everything designed is, is ADA compliant, so, um, every one of these designs, uh, is focusing on, on ADA. It's all accessible, uh, form of travel. We also implemented two ADA swings within the, uh, within the design, so these are designated for, for children in, in wheelchairs, and then every single thing on this structure is compliant to ADA.
Great, and then, um-
On both, of both structures, both areas.
I, I believe there's not, um, 'cause my daughter plays there after soccer games and so forth, there's not a lot of seating for parents, um, currently, I don't, I don't believe if I'm remembering correctly. Are we allowing for, you know, it's nice for parents to sit and be able to watch, and, and the other thing, just as a, from the city perspective, is there ability to maybe add more benches that could be sponsored through the Park and Rec Foundation or some such thing? 'Cause they're really nice, you know, we dedicated one to my father in Burton Park, and it's just a really great, uh, opportunity to, uh, you know, sort of-
So I think to answer that quickly is there is existing seating along the perimeter of both play areas, both of which are, are, those are all staying. We're not removing any of that, but in fact, we're adding, um, some seating. So in the five to 12, there's, there's, again, ADA seats, so a wheelchair can actually roll up to those, to those tables, which is nice. Here's a third, uh, area for the wheelchair to roll up to. So there's two, um, two tables in the five to 12, two tables in the two to five, and then again, the water area, uh, there's infrastructure that's there that's gonna remain, which there's, uh, there's picnic tables, um, so all that stuff is gonna remain.
Okay, so are, is there net increase in seating at all?
Uh, with the two playgrounds, there is, yes, there's, there's four additional picnic tables, uh, in addition to what they currently have.
So I would just say for the future, it'd be great to look for opportunities to maybe be able to add some, because ideally, you know, you get, the families come out, and then they wanna picnic, and they wanna hang out, and they wanna play softball, and, and right now, I know, it seems to be sort of, I, I know when, you know, my daughter goes there or whatever, it's just sort of like, they can play, but it's not a place that you wanna hang, and so the more we can do that, and it seemed to be a popular thing, and Burton might be popular in the neighborhoods.
Okay, Mr. Grisilli?
No, no questions.
Okay, I have no question either, but we have public comment. Is, uh, Christopher Mahoney still here? You can come up and speak for him.
I'll speak for him.
And I see Mr. Hillborn has left. Well, you, you, you'll be able to go next, but if you could fill out a slip when you're done, that'll be fine. Oh, um, I'm sure you can grab a pen from our city manager. Okay. Now, just feel free to introduce yourself and-
Uh, Michelle Mahoney.
Okay.
Um, I'm a resident of the L'Oreal Park area, and, um, we really want this park. I've talked to probably 30 families in our neighborhood who, and with this laid out, or you can assume why a lot of them weren't able to stay or able to come, um, but it's really sorely wanted and needed. Many of us have to go to other parks within the city of San Carlos in order to be able to get the facilities that we would like our children to be able to play at. Um, and it is a community park, as you said, Mr. Lewis. A lot of people use the park for soccer and baseball, uh, games, and siblings or children after they have their game wanna play on the equipment, and the equipment that's there really does need to be replaced, and so we hope that you consider approving this project. We would be very grateful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up? Either of you who ever wants to go first?
Somebody go.
It is late. All my kids wanted to come, we want the park. I live on Bayport Court-
If you could introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, my name's Tony Gab, and I do live on Bayport Court. I've been there 12 years. That structure's 11 years old. However, excuse me, the, um, my only concern is the water structure being so close to 18 Bayport Court, which is where they're proposing it from what I saw. The problem with where that location is, it is the only barbecue area for Bayport Court, otherwise they go all the way to the other side, and there's nowhere else to reserve for barbecue or play. So I'm okay with the water structure, I just don't think it should be right next door to that house. First of all, it's a rental, it's incredibly difficult to sell, 'cause Michelle and I are both brokers, we know how that tough that is. The house next to that is distressed, and sometimes there's just a lot of activity, as you know, at the park with your family. So having that play structure so close to a residence, I think is a, not the play structure, the water feature, is just a bad location, in my opinion. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. And lastly?
My name is Raquel Randon Walker, I also live in the neighborhood. I'm actually speaking really on behalf of my son. He's two, and, you know, I just went to Burton Park, uh, when the sun came out finally, and realized just how much fun he had. It was so much fun. So I just wanted to say how excited I was that there's gonna be a, the possibility of a park, new play equipment, a water feature. I hadn't even thought about how, the issue with how close it would be to the house. I'm not really sure if that's gonna be, I don't know how that's gonna be solved, but I, I'm just hoping that the council will consider, um, the playground. I think that the, what's there now is sorely lacking, and I think that, uh, this will just provide a lot more for the kids to go to, and I think it'll just be a lot more fun and giggles for a long time to come, so I'm, I'm hoping you can really consider approving the, the plan.
All right, thank you. Okay, oh yeah, if you just hand that to our city clerk or our city manager over there, he'll get it to us. If we can start with, uh, discussions, does anyone wanna dig on?
I feel like the, there's a question, Guy, maybe, as to whether or not, um, we looked at alternate locations for the water structure, and if there's, if we're losing some, a gathering, a barbecue gathering area, is there, is there a way that we might be able to allow for that in a closer location or, or something, given some of the problems? Just wondering about that.
Uh, we went over the site thoroughly, looking for, uh, the best site for the water feature, and this is where we ended up. The other side's being too small, uh, not a safety risk for the users of the water feature because of the action in the playground. We, we went through everything and, and ended up in this location. Uh, the barbecue area does stay, there will be benches, there will be areas over there. There's not a whole lot of park to move things around over there anymore. We're using pretty much of the park, so, uh, we did take those into consideration as issues.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, uh, we're entertaining a motion.
Resolution 2011?
Forty-three.
Resolution of the city council, city San Carlos, authorizing city manager water contract, Miracle Play System in the amount of $326,125 to install new playground equipment at L'Oreal Park.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Growcott. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to 12B. Thank you, and have a good night. Unless you wanna stay for the discussion of summer recess, but, all right, uh, 12B, consideration of declaring city council summer recess and authoring cancelization of July 25th, 2011, and August 8th, 2011, city council meetings. Before we get to, Mr. Malp, we're gonna need a, a motion to extend to midnight because we do have to go to closed session, so. I know Bob's not gonna make it. Someone else like to make it?
So, I'm with that we extend the meeting to-
All right, do we have a second?
I'll exuberantly second that.
All right, uh, is anyone opposed? No, all right, seeing none, moving on. Mr. Malp?
Well, good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council, Jeff Malp, uh, city manager. The item, uh, the last item on your agenda this evening, uh, gives you an opportunity to discuss, uh, taking a summer recess for the city council. What's proposed, uh, before you is that you would cancel your July 25th and August 8th council meetings. Uh, as an alternative, you could choose to, uh, cancel, uh, just one of the two or neither, if you so choose. I will point out that I believe on August 29th, you've got a retreat, uh, a strategic planning retreat scheduled, so you will be having, uh, two meetings, a regular meeting, uh, your second meeting in August, as well as the, uh, strategic planning, uh, retreat. Uh, the, uh, the canceling of a council meeting during summer is something that took place in San Carlos for many, many years. We've got away from it the last few years. It's quite common for, uh, cities on the peninsula to cancel, uh, one or two meetings. I've been working with the city staff over the last couple of months to prepare them for this possibility, so that they could begin to program their agenda items accordingly, so that we aren't in the position of having to call special meetings, uh, during that recess. Having a, a recess of a political body is a, is a common practice, uh, you know, obviously, uh, the United States Congress takes recesses, uh, the state legislator takes recesses, and I mentioned, uh, just briefly moments ago, you've got many neighbors that take recesses as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I think really this item is, uh, understood by the council and, and open to your own internal debate, so.
Okay, are there any questions?
I just, no, no question, I just have concerns.
Okay, so seeing no questions, thank you, Mr. Malp. Um, I don't think there's anyone left in the pub. Is there any public comment? Nope, mainly just press and staff. So we'll start with the discussion. Mr. Grisilli, you have concerns?
Well, because my, my point is, if we don't, if we cancel these meetings, and then we need to schedule them, some of us may have other plans. So my, I don't understand why we wouldn't schedule these meetings, and then a week or 10 days ahead of it, if there's nothing to do, we just cancel the meeting a week ahead. Do we need a meeting, Mr. Williams, to cancel a meeting?
Well, we, you don't, you don't need a meeting to cancel it, but I think staff, uh, probably needs some direction, um, in general, to whether or not to consider canceling the meeting, because the, the, the schedule work, and Jeff can correct me on some of this, the schedule work, and, um, he would, he would, you'd be directing him in advance to cancel a meeting if there's no agenda items, is, is sort of what would be happening, so-
Well, I understand, but isn't, isn't, for my mind, the opposite is, if, if we cancel these meetings, some of us may decide that we're gonna go on vacation, and we're not gonna be here. So if something comes up, we're not gonna be here. Well, we normally wouldn't do that, 'cause we, we've, we've had these meetings, so that's just, the other council members might have different opinions on it, but, I, you know, I don't have necessarily a problem with canceling if we have nothing to do. We've done it before, but we, I, I don't remember that we've done, in my four and a half years, maybe we did it before, we've canceled two. We've canceled one, but not, not necessarily two. And if that's the compromise, I guess I'll go for one, but two, just, it seems, I'm just worried that something's gonna come flying down the road, and one of us or two of us, maybe three of us, aren't gonna be here, so then you're not gonna have a meeting anyway. Anyway, just, that's my point, I'm done.
Okay, is there any other comments?
No, I'm just going to, I'm going to echo the concerns that Mr. Grisilli has. I'm finding it hard to believe that, you know, we can afford two meetings off. In the past, when I first came on the council in 2001, we historically did take a break, and then we got to a point, I think it was when we were dealing with, uh, the fire issues in 2005, that we couldn't take a break because we had too many things going on. And since then, I don't remember how we've dealt with this from year out, year in, year out, since 2005, but, um, historically, we have taken a break in August, and so I guess a compromise, and my preference would be that we go ahead and have our meetings in July, but, uh, take a break in August for one of the meetings.
And again, I'm not, not to interrupt, I'm not, I'm not saying we have to have a meeting just to come in here and do two items, but you may say, you know, there isn't anything available on July 25th, so we cancel that meeting. We cancel planning commission meetings all the time when there's no agendas, so I, I just, like I said, I think maybe the compromise would be the, to August, which we have done in the past.
Yeah, I, to, to speak to your approach, I think your approach would be perfectly valid. If you wanna say that the, you know, the direction is try to cancel the meeting in July because you don't have any items, but if you do, uh, have the meeting, and we'll keep that one on our calendar, and the compromise being definitely cancel the meeting, the first meeting in August, we're already gonna have two meetings in late August as it stands. If, if that's the direction, I'm comfortable with it.
Are there any other comments? Do you need a motion, or is that good enough, Mr. Malp?
I think a motion to clarify would be a good thing.
Mr. Grisilli, would you like to make a compromise motion?